Good, okay, all right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, August 14th, 2025 County Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Markhor.
Here.
Commissioner Matherly.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell.
Here. Sorry, almost wasn't.
And if you'll join us in the invocation, please.
Exodus 35:35 reads, "He has filled them with the skill to perform every work of an engraver and of a designer and of an embroiderer, in blue and in purple and in scarlet material and in fine linen, and of weaver as a weaver, as performers of every work and makers of designs." Today, I ask God to give us the skills that we need to lead this meeting and lead our community into a better direction. Amen.
Amen. If you'll join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeus symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures. Yeah, and we're gonna, Commissioner Matherly wanted to have like a little moment of science and maybe say a little bit about Charles Walker. He's recently passed away and he's been in our community for 102 years.
Charles was a, he was a, his family was homesteaded up in the Sixteen Springs. He was very active in the community. He was on our grazing board for Otero County for, I don't know how many years, but forever. Anybody that knew him, he was a great man. He could tell you many stories and he was sharp as a tack at 102 years old. So, I'd just like to take a moment of silence, just a second, and pay our respects. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll start off with our sheriff's office report.
Good morning.
Good morning. Did you get behind the dump truck site in Comanada Ridozo?
One.
One.
He just puts his lights on and goes around.
Yeah, I can't do that. I need some lights.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Black, Otero County Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And for July, for the sheriff's office, responded 2,294 calls for service. We generated 270 investigative reports, conducted 54 traffic crash investigations. We had 88 arrests for the month. We had four summonses that were issued. We issued 108 traffic citations, served 371 subpoenas for the courts, responded in Tularosa to 73 calls, responded in Clough to 75 calls, and calls responded to in the city of Almagordo was 371. Not used to doing this off the computer. Narcotics, we had 10 search warrants. We had 26 arrests. They generated 91 case reports, seized $836 in cash, we had 11 vehicles that were seized, seven firearms that were seized, 11 fugitives were apprehended, and we had 14 jail possession cases. And let me kind of explain that, like, we talked about the last meeting. They thought that a lot of this was coming through the mail, from the legal mail, from the attorney's offices and stuff. We've looked into that. Deputy Graves, or Agent Graves, has worked on that investigation. He's contacted these attorneys out of Albuquerque and everything, but they have no idea what's going on. So, it's being, somebody else is putting this stuff together, putting Suboxin and stuff in it, and using a legal address. So, the attorneys are concerned about that, highly concerned about that. So, they're working on it on their end also.
Good.
We seized 1,096 grams of meth, 3.8 grams of heroin, 7.4 grams of marijuana. We seized 62 Suboxin strips, 7.73 grams of cocaine, 5.74 grams of fentanyl powder, and 3,877 fentanyl pills. July was a very busy month for the narcotics division. Total of $171,740 worth of illegal narcotics seized. Our special events, public relations, we had a physical fitness testing. We had a total of 16 applicants, as usual. Eight of them showed up. Four of them passed the physical fitness portion of it, moved on to the written test, and kind of off the norm. Normally about half of those pass on the written test, but all four passed the written test. And they passed it with good numbers, too. All four of them that passed the written test, they went on to an oral board, in which, you know, they were scored with their written and oral board. All four of them looked like they could be very viable candidates. We'll start the background investigation, or background checks on those four. I also received three lateral applications, and we're looking into those. We'll kind of see what, kind of look at all of them and see who's gonna be our best candidates. With the sergeant testing that we recently had, we had Edwards and Sergeant Edwards and Sergeant Dana Cruz, they have now gone through their sergeant's FTO testing. They've got that done. They are now doing their portion of the job. The other two, Sergeant Wells and Sergeant Villa, they have moved into their new positions and now they are currently in their sergeant's training. It's made a big difference having these guys in those spots where they need to be. Again, I wanted to just reiterate that we did have four deputies attend the CIT training in Almagordo. We are 90% done with CIT training, or 90% of our deputies have gone through CIT. We will hopefully, the next CIT will try to get us at that 100% mark. And we had Deputy Lopez, he graduated the academy. He's halfway through his FTO program. Deputy Velazquez is also, he completed his certification by waiver, and he is real close to finishing up his FTO. I have four new recruits that were in the pre-academy training. They have completed that. Last Sunday, they left for Hobbs. They are now in the 16-week academy in Hobbs. Report we got yesterday, they're all doing very, very well. Couple of them are squad leaders and one of them is possibly gonna be the class president, so. With the retirement of UnderSheriff Jet at the end of the month, I have three positions open. And again, with the testing and the lateral applications, hopefully I will have all of those positions filled pretty soon. And then we went to, again, went to Las Lunas, picked up five more Tahoe's. They are currently at the outfitters, waiting on some equipment to arrive. And they'll get them outfitted, get all the necessary equipment and stuff in them, and we will get those in rotation. That's all I have for right now. Stand for any questions.
I got one, David. We discussed here a few days, well, it's been a week or so ago, with RB and you on the BLM property south of town by Green Acres?
Right.
And you were gonna kind of research that because there's private property involved in that also? Did you come up with any kind of a solution, or?
I haven't yet. I've talked with BLM once, but the problem that we have is that strip of private property. And as far as trying to reach out to that private property owner, we have not had any luck at all. It just makes it difficult, you gotta cross that private to get to BLM. So, basically to answer your question, I do not have an answer for you right now. We have reached out to a few people, but I do not have an answer, a solution, or anything like that right now.
I drive by there pretty regularly and I keep waiting to see where somebody drove around the boulders and stuff. I haven't seen any signs of that yet, but I know it's coming.
No, it'll happen.
Yeah. I just didn't know how we could head this off or what, so. RB, did you come up with anything on that?
I haven't yet. Was planning to meet with the sheriff and then find out more about his thoughts on it and get with BLM after that. The issue's just the private property. We could probably put some, I think there is something set up in front of it right now, which is what we were kind of concerned about, but if it's in our easement.
Well, there's a few people that's upset with that because the road's blocked off that goes up into that canyon that they go up in there. And so, we got two different sides of the road here hitting that, so I'm trying to figure out what, we need to figure out something, number one, for that. But the most important thing, there's been six or seven bullet holes in houses so far and I don't want anybody to get shot.
Right, right. I understand that. That's a concern we have. I've been in Ridozo most of the week. We've got a sheriff's conference going on up there right now and I'll be done with that hopefully tonight, get back to the office. I've got a list of chores that need to be done as soon as I get back, so it just keeps piling up.
Okay.
I'll definitely, definitely work on that.
Thank you.
It's almost not good to be gone because of which you come back.
I know.
Yeah, when you come back, there's several hundred emails and stuff, but probably spend the weekend getting caught up on all that, so.
That's why they got me a driver, so I can keep up with that while I'm on the road.
I normally don't carry a laptop, but I do now. I have to stay in touch with everything, so.
Well, I'm happy to report at the sheriff's conference, we had a cornhole tournament and our deputy, Otero County came in second out of 22 teams. San Juan County won and our guys got second and it had been raining, so the bags were really heavy. So, when they hit the boards, they were just like plump, you know? It was kind of interesting.
Is it this Saturday, the Counseling Center is having a big event and they're having a cornhole tournament?
Oh, are they?
And I actually sponsored a team and I put on there, don't have a team. Do you want to put together a team?
I gotta put a good team.
It's a lot of notice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're all still in Ridozo.
If you do, let me know and I'll say, okay, I have a team.
As soon as we get done here, I gotta go back for the, today's the final day of conference and stuff. I'll get with them and see.
Okay.
They enjoy playing, and they're pretty good at it.
Yeah, it was fun to watch them. You know, all the crap talking going on between the counties. It was pretty funny.
As long as they don't mind being called Team 54, you're okay.
There you go.
They were the minions up there.
They were, they were the minions.
I don't really care what they're called.
Good deal.
And we're gonna move your two items, our new business, up under, right after we get through with the consent agenda, so you can get through and head back up.
Cool, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. John Barton, 9-1 Director. So, for the month of July, we did 2,641 911 calls into the center, 5,464 administrative lines, 33 reroutes of our abandoned 911s back into the center, 50 alarm lines, 305 fire line, 963 law lines, which I'm happy about because that means our officers and deputies are calling us less. Outbound, 2,714 with a total call volume of 12,170, which is about 1,000 more from last month. Our abandoned rate is 3.15% with a total of 298 abandoned 911s within to the center. Our busiest times of the month, first was around 3:00 PM, 5:00 PM, and then 1:00 PM, which we always see our afternoon always picking up. It usually picks up about, you know, about 11:30 in the morning and then we're pretty busy till about 8:00 PM at night. Staffing, we have five communication officer positions open. We have received two applications and they're going through the testing process currently. I have nobody in backgrounds. We are out again for our deputy director position, the one that we were offered the position to, she dropped from the hiring process. We had a few staff members attend the National APCO Conference in Baltimore. They had a little hiccup due to weather, they couldn't get back, but we finally got them back after a day of being stuck in Baltimore. They said that was a phenomenal class, very heavy in continuous education and training, so they came back and want to add some new things into the 911 center. You guys all attended our dispatch swearing, so all of our dispatchers are now considered first responders within Otero County. We only have two, one was out sick and one's on maternity leave, so when they come back and we do another swearing for our new hires, they'll be sworn in, too. All the dispatchers are currently working on their CPR and EMD retraining, as ours expire in November. And something cool, we just launched this week, was a program called COM Coach, which does 100% of our quality assurance within the center. It scores it all based off of an algorithm that it has, and it pretty much just alerts us when people are below scores and we can go in and see what the problems are. And then there's coaching techniques within that program, how to verify a phone number properly, how to ask for the address properly, giving them different techniques to try to get that information out of callers when they're in a high-stress incident. So, that program has been working and it, what's cool is it has people that score really good calls and really calls that we put them up on our boards within dispatch and it kind of lets everyone see who's doing well and what they're good at. And then it does a little cool competition thing between days and night shifts and what each shift needs to work on in professionalism, or call-taking skills, or a certain protocol for medical, and then what they're doing bad on and they need to work on, or what they're doing good on. So, it's awesome. And then we're partnered with the sheriff's office for October 14th for National Night Out at the Fairgrounds, so we've been working very strong on that, trying to get some vendors and participate, people to participate. We're working with emergency services to get them to participate and we're hoping we're gonna do some live demos and stuff like that of a mock car crash or scene with the helicopter come by, take off, and stuff like that. So, that will be really fun for the community. And then the last thing is, yesterday, we went out and again, we're trying to get people to register their AEDs throughout the county. So, if there's an AED that a business has, all they have to do is pulse point AED registration and it registers their AED with us, allows the 911 center to see where the AEDs are within the community. So, if someone calls in, like last night, we had a CPR in progress, you never know, the neighbor may have an AED next door and we can tell that caller, hey, run next door, go get the AED, it's gonna help them. As we know, with cardiac arrest, every minute that goes by, we lose about 10% of brain and heart function, so it's very important for the first 10 minutes, something that goes in cardiac arrest, that we get an AED on them to get them back into a normal sinus rhythm. So, we're trying to get that program up and started and we're hoping we're gonna do a campaign, a heart campaign in October because it is heart month. And that is all I have.
Would you want the businesses to register with that, too?
Yeah, so we have little cards. We went out to a bunch of businesses yesterday to start handing out some of those cards and we did register some of the AEDs on the property. When we see those AEDs come in, we have a sticker that we can put on the AED saying that they've been registered with that. I just ordered new stickers so we can put on the fire apparatuses, work with emergency services to see if we can get those stickers on there, too, that just says, "Register your AED." And then we're, again, we're working with Pulse Point. There's some grant funding out there that may help with marketing campaigns, too. So, we're kind of starting that process now so we can get prepared for October. And National Night Out will be a perfect time to really advertise that while we have everybody there and all our first responders and public safety partners there.
Been busy. That was really a nice swearing-in ceremony. I was happy we got to do that.
We were very excited and I can tell you the dispatchers were very pleased for the people that showed up and to support them. After everyone left, they were like, this is awesome, this is something that's really cool. And some of the other dispatch centers around that saw our Facebook posts and everything, were proud of us because this is a good stepping stone for us in New Mexico to get reclassified as first responders, as the last three years it's been denied. So, hopefully with this being pushed forward, it will change the state legislative this year, so.
Good.
Good, good. So, I got a return phone call a few weeks ago that my husband's phone had dialed 911. And we looked through his phone and he actually, because we didn't know anything about it, in his pocket and I thought it was like a butt dial, but there was no sent call out from his phone to 911. The scammers that steal phone numbers are, do you think that might become, do you think that's what may have happened to his phone?
It could have.
And are you seeing that?
We haven't. A lot of times, we actually get the activation as soon as your phone goes into SOS mode. So, that doesn't mean a phone call actually has to go out. So, on an iPhone, if you hold the two buttons down for a certain amount of time, it puts it immediately into SOS mode. it puts it immediately into SOS mode, and we receive that notification right then and there. It doesn't actually have to make a phone call out. So if it wasn't in his pocket, it could have gone into SOS mode, and that's where we receive that information. So, and that, from there, sends us the data, location, all that information, that we can make sure that someone is okay. And that's what we're, we're finding more and more of lately, is that just the simple SOS activations going in. So there are settings in the phone to turn off some of those SOS notifications, so like some that drops their phone, we receive a ton of those. People drop their phone, it calls us immediately, because it thinks it's in a crash. You can turn that stuff off, but there are features that you cannot turn off on a phone. Any phone that's made from 2018 and newer has to have some type of emergency service activation on the phone. So, and it can't be turned off, so that's where we see a lot of those, that people were like, "I didn't call." Well, your phone went into SOS mode, that's, that's why we receive the signal.
I'm gonna bring you his phone, so you could do all that fancy stuff, and then we won't have that problem.
No more SOSs from John Paul.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Got the buzz cut.
Feel better. Morning Commissioners, Matt Clark, Emergency Services.
Good morning.
For July, our code enforcement handled 32 solid waste cases, two illegal dumpings, three open burns, five unsecured loads at the convenience center. And then, as they were out driving, they found six piles of trash, and they just picked them up and turned them into the convenience center.
Thank you.
Our office responded to 14 fire calls, 16 EMS calls. We completed seven commercial fire inspections for July, and eight fireworks inspections. It's always going to happen in July, that we get out there to do those. Inspections make sure they have everything they're supposed to. I have two cases awaiting to go to court, and five cases in court. Just waiting for those dates to happen, to hopefully get a good outcome. We opened up 51 cases, closed 18, and completed 26 follow-ups, and did one fire investigation. The volunteers responded to 257 fires, two of them were structure fires, 167 calls for EMS. The state is switching to a new reporting system. They really weren't ready for it yet.
No way.
Shocking. So a lot of the stuff that we have had in the past, we're still trying to figure out how we're going to get it. The reports aren't readily available like they were with the old system. When dispatch stamps a call for us, it goes straight into our EMS reporting system. That's not happening. Talked to the EMS reporting system, they're thinking that's going to be quarter four, maybe quarter one, because they weren't ready for it. And the sad thing is, it's a national rollout, and it started in the East Coast, and we're finding stuff that hasn't been done yet, so.
Wow.
It, it's going to be a challenging few months, and a lot of extra work on the volunteers, especially the busy departments, because you're going to have to put them in multiple systems now to maintain their funding.
We literally just resolved that, what, a year ago?
Yes. So we're, we're starting over again. We're, we're hopeful that our EMS reporting will get everything done faster, and should help us out, but the busy departments are going to be doing double, triple the work to stay current.
We have to use this program?
If the EMS folks want EMS funding, they have to use ImageTrend. If, and that's by state mandate, if these fire departments want fire money, they have to use this new nearest system, instead of the old NIFR system, because the US switched, and NIFR's is going dead at the beginning of, end of this year. So, a lot of learning curves, not much training that was handed out, out to them, but Jacob's been running it, getting everything that he can to try and help out the volunteers. So, really, really good on that. So Mike Court still had the active warrant on that down at Chaparral. Tractor Road, he's submitting weekly receipts to prove that the enormous pile of trash that he has on his property is dwindling. And we're just going to keep, keep monitoring that. We opened up a case on 53 Almaturo again, after it was let go in court, and the cars have been moved off the easement, they've been pushed back closer to the structure, so. 15 First Street is going to court September 10th. It's another property that we worked diligently to get stuff off of it, and it's right back to worse than it was before. And 3 Poplar, we're still waiting to get in contact with the caregivers to get them to start cleaning up that property. 23 Desert Star, major improvements there. We just have a meeting with the EPA, they're going to come down and take a look at the sewage that's being dumped there. The Slash Pit, we had 50 loads come in for the month, none go out. Year-to-date, we're at 952 loads that went into the Slash Pit. So that's basically since, was it mid-April, I think? And 44 loads come out. We're 20 loads short of what we did last, all of last year. So people are getting out there cleaning up their property. We also know that people are getting out there cleaning up their properties of trash as well. I had a meeting with Ralph the other day, and he said that as they're coming through the gate shack, they're complaining about code enforcement being on them to clean up their properties, so.
Yay.
It's a good thing.
Ralph, I think, is a little upset, because he's a little busier, but overall, it's a good thing. We're, we're seeing that it is working, and hopefully more people will, will get on board.
Did Ralph make a comment about flying beer bottles?
He did not.
Okay. Did you know beer bottles fly?
I did not know that.
Yeah, that burn trailer, when we went to dump them there, they literally would fly, and one of the drivers actually got hit in the face and split his cheek open with.
That's crazy.
Wow.
How, what is the status of that property that is on the north side of the convenience center? That, what's going on there?
We did the floodplain for, in there, for him to pull out all the rocks and, and stuff that come off the floor. I saw a gate that went up. So now we're just monitoring to, to make sure that they're going to clean up.
Good, okay. And I want to say thank you, literally every single problem I sent you this month, you were, you were on it, so thank, that's very helpful.
You're welcome. That, the land that's to the west of the convenience center, and south of the area you're talking about, is going to be donated to us. It will come with the easements for Alamo Transit to access their material site.
Good.
And Ralph has some plans for a, a, a spot to do maintenance work, I believe, on the equipment.
Good. That all turned out perfectly.
That's awesome.
We'll take care of the, we'll remediate the area where illegal dumping was occurring.
Great.
I believe we'll probably set up a secure fence, and, and that won't be an issue going forward.
Okay, great.
Have you heard anything about Lincoln County's new biomass center they're setting up?
I have not.
I talked to Commissioner Fisher this week, and he said that they're setting up a biomass center with all that debris and all that stuff they've had from all the flooding, and it's gonna burn it, like a burn curtain, like what we had, but he said they're using it to generate power with the, you know, the stuff that's coming out. I thought that was pretty cool, so I wanted to let you know about that. And I asked him if he was gonna open it up to anybody else, and he said, "Right now, they've got so much that they don't need anything else." But eventually, you know, they might open that up to other areas, so I thought that was cool. And then I talked to Commissioner Dana in Chavitz County, and she was telling me that some citizens had come forward and wanted to know if they could store some of those abandoned or used wind turbine blades that I freaking hate with every fiber of my being on their property. And they said, "Well, it's your private property, you know, you can do what you want." So then the neighbor next door started coming to the commission complaining about all the fiberglass particles that were coming in through their house, through the air conditioning and stuff. Come to find out, those people weren't storing that stuff, they were chipping it up, because they were getting paid to chip it, like with the wood chipper. So all those fiberglass particles are just in the air all over the place over there. So we need to keep aware of that, because with the funding for these wind turbines stopping, the subsidized funding, I think we're going to see more of this. And I don't want them in Otero County, I don't want them in our dirt, and I don't want them on our land. So we need to keep our eyes out for that.
Wow.
That's not a happy note.
No. It made me forget what I was gonna ask.
So Matt, from our meeting in Chaparral Monday night, did you get a chance to look on anything on the fireworks?
I did not.
So this is, RB is gonna come to you too, and our ordinance says, they're complaining down there about fireworks, three, four, five in the morning going off. We should have a noise ordinance, don't we, David?
I do.
On the fireworks themselves, yeah, there is a noise ordinance, and there is an ordinance that limits what they can actually shoot, like why rockets would be.
Well, I, I found a deal, paragraph in the state statute, which is no fireworks after 11 o'clock, except for 4th of July, it goes to 12, and then New Year's Eve is 1 o'clock or something like that. From 8 to 11. So I didn't know if we had something on the county in our, in any kind of noise ordinance.
We have a noise ordinance, and I, I think that would likely fall under it. I don't think we have anything specific in the fireworks ordinance. I definitely violated that when I was like 22.
You're lucky statute limitations have run out, so we won't be having arrested.
Well, I, I told the people down there that I would try to get an answer for them on that, because I guess it's, it's bad everywhere. I mean, you watch the news in Albuquerque with them blowing off all night long. But I would just ask them if there was anything, if we can get a, if I can get a copy of the ordinance or the county ordinance. And then, did you and Cody get a chance to do, measure that easement on First Street?
We measured the easement, and I made a phone call to the sheriff's office, and they were going to go out and investigate it.
Okay, so he was encroaching?
Yes.
Okay, that's on First Street, too.
I can tell by the look on your face, it wasn't good.
It was, he was encroaching a lot.
On a lot of stuff, so. David, what, I don't know if you're aware of that, but it's, remember First Street, Bolz Acres, with the vehicles, and now he's got a building set up again in the easement area.
Matt and I talked a while ago before the meeting and stuff, and I guess Sergeant Villa went out and took some measurements and looked at it and stuff. I'll try to contact him and talk with him here in just a little bit, but maybe get out of here and see what, what he came up with, so.
Yeah.
First I knew about it, I'll, I'll see what Villa's.
This is the gentleman that we thrive, we helped clean up their property, and now it's worse than it's ever been.
I know.
So this is, it's, it's out of hand, that, that guy, anyway, I hope.
And, and he does have a court date, September 10th.
Yeah. Let's hope that something comes about that, instead of.
I hope so.
That's all I have.
I can't remember if this address was on Alamo Taro or Quail Trails, I can't remember right now, but Statins, when you have, because we have so much flooding issues right now, private property owners are, are blocking off the water, and because their neighbor built a berm, his fence is at risk now, and I know that you're addressing it already, but what, what is, what is the difference when a private property owner is trying to protect their property and then causes damage somewhere else? I know that that's against the law, but what can we do to remediate that?
The only thing that we can do ahead of time is, the residents have to file for a floodplain permit, whether they live in a flood zone or not, because they're going to potentially alter any of the runoff. And there's ways that they can protect their property and still manage that water as it leaves. So it's more of a slower, slower release.
It's a fine line there, because you can't divert water onto somebody else's property.
And they have to be careful about diverting the water off of someone's property, because they can be held liable for any of the damages that happen to the other property, or even, because it is Almaturo, and that section is a private road, those residents that live further down could be damaged, and have to try and pay for that road to be repaired. Or it could have been a county-maintained road, and they're damaging our road. So unfortunately, if they don't do their floodplain permit like they're supposed to, we don't know what's happening until there's a complaint. And it's, the unfortunate thing is, it, it really goes back to, you can't do harm upstream or downstream, and if you do, you could be civilly liable for whatever happens.
So does this turn into civil between the property owners?
Between the property owners.
And we have nothing to do with that in that?
Correct.
Okay.
It could involve the state engineer too. Some, depending on the, I guess, the magnitude of the diversion, if they, if it's a certain size, or is going to cause a certain amount of water to be diverted, it requires a permit from the state engineer.
Good. That's all I've got.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Cody.
You're welcome, thank you.
I did get your message on Jade Street down there.
Okay.
So, thank you.
And, and we have two new officers that are trained, and they're ground running, so.
Good.
Do you rather I forward those emails I'm receiving to you, or I've been sending them to Jacob?
Just include me in it.
Okay.
Jacob still helps me a lot.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Tom is not here today. Nice hat.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners, Trent Parker, project manager. First is the chin's roof replacement, we're still waiting on the signed agreements, as soon as those come in, we're ready to get started on that, to get that out of the way.
I might have gray hair when that's done.
It's already there, girl.
I think I'm gonna be pushing retirement. Flickin' just center, the brick veneer, the engineers are off and started on, working on the engineering for the repairs, so that we can get a good cost estimate of what it's going to cost to do those repairs. Almo West Fire and Rescue, this month, the contractor overex, or excavated the footings, and now they're working on the con, the reinforcement steel and the forms for the concrete. And then at 23 El Paso, we ran into a minor unforeseen, had to relocate a leach field that we had no idea was there. But that's still moving forward. Bolz Acres, the footings have been excavated, and next week they'll start the forming for that tank pad out there as well. The District Courthouse, we had a budget meeting with the contractor and architect to review their initial budget estimates, and the initial numbers indicate that we're over budget. So now we're working with both parties to try to value engineer and, and try to get some of the costs down. We've even entertained, and the architect's currently looking at possibly getting rid of the basement portion, pushing it up to ground level. Basements are very expensive to build, and to my opinion, a flooding problem in this area. So we're, we're looking at pushing that up, and then some of the admin stuff going out to the west of the building, and so we're just working diligently trying to. And so we're just working diligently trying to get that reeled into budget. The Twin Forks Flood Mitigation, they're about 50% done on the design on that and actively working on it. Railroad Bridge, same thing, engineers are actively working on the design for it. The Otero County Health Clinic Repairs, we had a pre-construction meeting yesterday with the user to let them know that Monday we're gonna be starting the repairs on, on that building. Along with that, we're adding a concrete, what we call a drip edge around the the building to try to keep any future water away from the building. Cause that's what pretty much caused all the rotting that's there now. Jack Rabbit Flats Fire Department, still working on getting pricing for the second building for them so that once we get that, we can go ahead and start working on those additions and improvements. The Weed Fire Department, the insurance repairs work will start next week, we'll start repairing what damage was done to the building. Shooting range improvements, working with Mark on that and I'm gonna set up a meeting with him so that we can prioritize the priorities in order for, for the bid process. That way we can get that out to bid and get looking on all of his improvements out there. Chaparral Law Enforcement Facility, we're waiting on the signed agreements for that, that way we can get the design started and get moving on it. Cloud Country West and Upper Cox Canyon, the pump house was completed last week. Other than the doors which are going on today, for the one, Upper Cox Canyon, they're gonna start also today to and hopefully have it complete by next week. Which the electricians and plumbers are already set up to follow to complete those improvements. The Animal Shelter renovation in Canopy, the canopy, they're roofing it today, so we're hoping to have it complete by, by Friday. And then the kennel replacements, the materials and everything have already been ordered and so we're just gonna work with the director out there to try to find out when there's a good time to get in there and start working on the interior. The EOC Generator in UPS, I'm hoping to have the purchase orders for those here real soon, that way we can go ahead and get the generator ordered for Matt's building out there. Other than that, we got a lot of little things going on, but it's, it's pushing along.
You're the busiest man in Otero County.
You do a really good job for us.
You do, we appreciate it.
It's a juggling act. I'm good at juggling, I guess. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks Matt.
Thank you.
Trent? Sorry.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Nina Sisler, Correctional Service Director, 4th of July. Our average daily population was 167. Today's total population is 173. In-house, we have 151. We have 118 males, 33 females. We do still have three at Otero Prison. We have four on treatment furloughs. Two on out of county court holds and three furloughs, regular furloughs, one in Lincoln County. We have six juveniles, three at Lee County and three at Dona Anna County. In facility courts, we had 83 municipal courts. Magistrate Court, we had 181. District, 108. Out of county courts, we had 14. In-person courts, we had 17 magistrate court in-person and 19 district. And our vacancies, we have 10 full-time positions open and one full-time office specialist in the front office. We do have one application presently. Training, we had, we sent one corporal and one sergeant to the frontline supervisor training in Portales for detention with the New Mexico counties and they completed it. We had two officers that went to crisis CIT training as well. And our inmate phone system is doing that. They have an activation where we can do the 988 for suicide and mental health crisis 24/7, which will alert also, it's not activated, but it should be soon this week. And it'll alert the upper chain command as well as our mental health for the detainees that are having some kind of mental health crisis or suicide and it'll notify us as well. So it'll be accessible to them and it's through the inmate phone system.
Do we have our, those bracelets, are they, are we using those yet?
We have internet, the internet isn't up yet to have those yet.
Okay, they were talking about those at this sheriff's conference, again, there was a vendor up there selling those and it made me remember that we have those.
In, and then we have some up from this budget and we're just waiting, we, we need the internet.
It's about, about 12 miles away, it's working on it.
Yes.
I've been watching it.
We will kid it before I retire. And then it'll be fully operational, so. And then the other technology that we have coming in as well will soon be flooding out. We've been doing the welcome boarding with the Corrections One training as well as the Field Training Officer Training Program. And we should in a couple of weeks have our health and wellness, kinda like what Barney was saying with this, where you see their job performance, we'll get alerts, we'll see where we can help them and so we can retain and keep the people that we do have.
And I really, really wanna start tracking what the state is supposed to be paying us for transportation because we're really gonna make a run at that this year in the legislature, it's part of HB2. And we need to know what we're billing them, what they owe us, you know, what, what they're in deficit because even one of the senators said, "Well, it's it's in the state law that they're supposed to be reimbursing the counties and every year they say, "Well, we don't have the money." Even though we have surplus year after year.
Years and years, yes.
So we're probably gonna end up suing them. So we need to really have good information because without those numbers, it's hard to fight for it. But when we can literally tell them what it's costing the county to do this transportation and the state is supposed to be reimbursing us and they're not, so.
And we do track the mileage, we do have a mileage for juveniles and adults. And we do track it, we do have, they do the mileage, they do how many staff it takes.
Yeah, we need the manpower hours because that's, that's very expensive. Okay, yeah, we need to really track that.
That's part of my monthly report to Pamela as well. So we do, I have years, probably that I could dig up in the box.
Yeah, they said back seven years would be good, if we could go back that far because, I mean, as far as you can, but that's, that's kinda what they're asking for.
And we do keep it and we've always tracked it and because of, like you said, they've always said they're gonna pay and they always say they don't have that plan. And so we've tracked it for a long time.
Okay, good. Yeah, we're gonna fight for that this year, so.
Let's grab that money.
I know, yeah, yeah, they have money for everything else.
That's right.
So they can, they can pay the counties what they owe us. Okay, all right, anything else?
Nope.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Jason Lohrman, Forest Service, Lincoln National Forest.
Good morning.
How are you all?
The dog has to come up here.
He has to come up there. He just found a spot.
And I appreciate you calling me the other day because I started immediately getting asked about that, so.
Of course.
I'm glad I had a heads up.
Try to, try to catch you when I know there's something sensitive and I was gonna hold that one for the last one because I figured it would be the most discussion if you'd like. There's three other topics I wanted to touch on while we were here today. One is SSRP, just letting you know where we are in that. We've been working to move forward, we met with State Forestry and Game and Fish at the end of last month to talk about the next five years in that, doing the management experiment and what projects would be first up for implementation as well as funding needs. Game and Fish actually came down yesterday to talk through funding as well and work through what agreements will look like for some assistance between agencies and we're, we're outlining what that will look like and we're gonna stand up the collaborative group with the first meeting being likely in the beginning of calendar year 26. There's gonna be different seats in that and we wanna invite you and ask you to come sit on that with us as well. And then in Fire, staying in low fire danger right now, we've seen pretty wetting trends. We'll continue to monitor, we've had two or three snags that have caught fire in the last couple of weeks, nothing significant at this time. Most of our resources are actually assisting other units, but we do have some engines on site for IA and initial attack or initial attack into addressing fuels projects. We'll be working to start burning hopefully in the October timeframe, doing both piles and broadcast burns. And we'll actually be holding a community meeting just to talk about fuels treatments across the Lincoln. It'll be in Ridoso this year and we're planning for that to happen before the end of September just to have little open house stations for people to come chat about the projects they're working on. And then relative to Forest Health, just doing some surveys to track any potential for beetle activity or beetle kill and the health of the trees and where we can target some treatments. We did aerial flights last month and they're starting to ground troop them now. Once we have it ground truthed, that'll help us identify where there's hot spots and where we need to address so we can not have anything spread to be more damaging than it is. And then the topic that is of the hour, I assume, which is OHV use. The weekend of the 26th, we saw a pretty large unauthorized OHV event. Usually we're able to at least identify them ahead of time. People have been very generous in posting when they're gonna host events, even if they're not permitted on social media and through other realms and we can bring in some extra capacity to do citations and compliance. Our law enforcement officer found this one the day of when he was out patrolling. So it delayed our ability to engage safely with it. Did call for some assistance, we got some assistance from the county, from the state and Game and Fish after he was able to call for assistance, but it wasn't pre-planned and delayed some. Some enforcement caused some pretty significant damage up in the Wells Canyon area. As a result, we've done some restoration work on it already. We closed that area to camping and motor vehicle use. We've brought in an extra law enforcement officer through the end of the month to help with patrols and then we have another one starting permanently, he'll finish field training this month and be serviceable come September. We've also, it is under, you know, they are investigating it, they've issued one citation so far and are pursuing others or pursuing continued investigation and potential citations. We'll continue to, to monitor and try to, try to address that because we do understand the, the impacts of it and I'm sure you've seen, we're trying to do a little bit of a public education campaign as well, it's on our Facebook, we're updating our webpage. We did an interview with KRQE that got some small sound bites, but trying to, trying to get out ahead of it, or ahead of education and really recruit the community to help us report and stay on top of that.
Do they come from out of town?
They did, we've seen a lot of these coming from El Paso, Juarez. This last event was organized out of Roswell. They're not the locals, most of the time when there are these large events, they're coming and.
I saw them coming off the mountain that day and I, I've never seen that, that many. I mean, there was like three on a trailer and they were all muddy and I thought they've been tearing up the countryside somewhere.
They have and it was unfortunately the largest one that our law enforcement thinks they've encountered on the forest, given that we didn't know about it. It compounds it, right, not just not knowing about it, but being the largest one as well.
Did they leave behind the trash that they did last time?
I've not heard that they left behind trash. It was, what I've heard about is the resource damage, the damage of driving through creeks, unauthorized roads, donuts and meadows. The couple motor vehicle accidents they had, things to that extent, but I haven't heard trash as a that's not elevated to my attention.
This is a repeat deal, this the gossers that turned in videotapes of this years in the past of the, in the same locations and stuff where Bluff Spring area and all them driving through there into that thistle weed place and all that. So this is just a thing that just keeps getting bigger and bigger. And the bad part of it is it put the black eye on the local people that drive and try to do the law-abiding stuff, they're the ones who's gonna pay the price on it, which isn't right, but.
And I think with us getting the moisture we've had this year too, it's, I think it's encouraging them to go up there and ride because you're not eating dirt all day. You know, it's, it's wet, so it's, they like it more.
It's wetter, it's encouraging them not to go to say Red Sands or somewhere elsewhere, there's an approved course or an approved area. And, you know, at least for the law-abiding locals, right, and staying on roads and trails that are designated. We didn't close roads and trails to, to use within their legal limits. We, we closed along Rio Pinyasco, Wells Canyon and Aguachiquita, that road and the repairing areas there where we had to do some restoration work to camping and motor vehicle use. Outside of parking off the side of the road to camp, it wasn't legal to do what they were doing in the first place, so it it shouldn't affect the legal use in that, that part except for the camping, which given the, the area an opportunity to recover. It'll also give us a little bit.
So did they close just passing, driving on the road? Is the road?
No, the road's still open, you just can't camp adjacent to, you can't have a campfire adjacent to, you can't park your motor vehicle adjacent to the road. So it'll give our law enforcement a little bit better opportunity to cite for violation there too, because now there's a closure order, not just the off-trail citations or.
Because they're fixing to have a real problem because hunting season's fixing to start up there and you got all them hunters that yeah, it's gonna be a mess, so.
And I don't know if it was, is related to the emails, RB, that you've been sending about the, the road use for off-road vehicles. I know a couple of years ago we were trying to get some more roads designated, opened up for off-road use. Is that a state issue or is that a Forest Department issue?
Both.
Okay.
So we, we, back then we put an ordinance in place that covered OHV use and made requirements like insurance and, and various stuff the state outlines if, if the county is going to allow them on county roads. And so we allow them on roads that are 45 miles per hour and less. They're not allowed on state highways and we were seeking to open up some of the state highways to them up and around Cloudcroft where, you know, it made sense to connect to different trails. But DOT did an assessment and didn't feel that it was safe, so they denied that request. And we haven't followed up on that.
Is that something that would allow the traffic to stay off of the forest roads maybe and?
I think they're, you know, the intent, they're still gonna wanna go beyond the trails. And it's one thing to do it out in the desert, it's different in the forest. And there are some gaps in, in the laws with what the state has. I think they could be improved. Right now enforcement is assigned to Game and Fish. The sheriff can still enforce those laws and can enforce our ordinance. But primary responsibility is designated to Game and Fish and then as far as on the Forest Service, they have a law enforcement wing, but they are enforcing federal law. There are some agreements that we could, procedures we could do where there'd be an agreement between the Sheriff Department and the Forest Service and, and they would deputize the Forest Service law enforcement officer to be able to enforce state law on, on the forest. We'd have to look at that and weigh how that's been, you know, the, the forest is huge and a lot of ground to cover and this isn't, there are laws in place that could handle this. It's a matter of enforcement and being able to cover the, the huge area. We, we struggled with that with just the Sheriff's Department trying to cover the entire county. I think the Forest Service has one or two law enforcement officers and it's just a lot of ground to cover. But I think this has highlighted how serious this situation has got since there has been little enforcement and people have just taken advantage of that and abused the privileges of riding around in these vehicles and created a dangerous situation. And I think now that, that this has brought it to light, more enforcement will occur and should curb the situation.
And then Amy, when we were trying to pass those laws on the, or trying to adapt, there were three highways they were trying to. It was, one of the reasons for that was where the Forest Service has closed some of the forest trails and stuff that they could access those certain roads and go down and then get on to another open trail to stop the driving on the closed trails and stuff like that. So, but that fell apart, like you said. So that was, that was the reason for a lot of that.
Well, this isn't a problem just in the mountains either because I've gotten complaints from the renters out on the Mesa, out on the 506, you know, that they're doing the same thing out there. So Gary Scarborough, who's the chairman of Plulak, our Public Land Use Advisory Council, reached out to me. And they were wanting to have a meeting because evidently there's, there's different laws and regulations between BLM, Forest Service, and then you've got public lands and private lands, private property. And so I reached out to Michael Perry. He's running for a state land commissioner. And so he said he'd be happy to come over and maybe have a meeting and kind of see what we can work on to kind of all work together because we're all having the same problem. And I know there's different, different times you can drive on different roads during hunting season. I mean, it is a, like a web of governmental, when you read all about it, so...
And for us, the challenge is the vehicles we're seeing now too. They're, they're really vehicles. They're not your side-by-sides or your ATVs that are actually permitted on our trails. They have to be within 50 inches. These are only permitted on actual roads under the game and fish authority with the permit. There is that, that portion there where we work with game and fish for enforcement, but they're not. The, what we're seeing of these events, the ones coming in and visiting aren't your hunters using a small side-by-side to get into the mountain or retrieve their game or set up camp. It's an off-road vehicle that's really illegal once it goes off the road in general for us. So that, that further compounds it and the, the challenges that we're seeing are when they leave the road and where they're permitted. And I actually, I talked to Harlan a little bit yesterday as well. He and I are going to try to get together on maybe some options that he can assist us on also.
Good, 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 yeah.
And I have one more.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, come up and speak into my...
That's your name?
If you remember me, I was in the accident and I'm going to be speaking about this when we're allowed. But I just heard that the reason that these buggies were originally allowed on the road was so that they could access the trail. The problem is, is most of these buggies nowadays are so large, they're not legal on the trails. So that access for them is no longer viable.
But there are forest roads that go in that they are legal on.
If they're a county road, but then they're a vehicle.
Yeah, yes, that's for a vehicle.
At that point, these vehicles are not made to drive on county roads. They're just allowed by variance to get to trails. So if they can't use the trail, then variance is no longer viable.
It's, it's, it's a bunch, but we'll just have to keep working on it.
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you decide where you're going to do timber sales?
How we're going to decide where, sorry, how we decide where we're going to do timber sales? Right now, most of our sales are going to be tied into SSRP and it's going to be done through that, which are prescribed in that management experiment. The majority of them are coming from that. Some of it's coming out of the salvage sales from Riedoso. And then the Forest Health flights that we just did will help us identify some areas to target.
How can we get timber sales opened up along the, the Otero County co-op transition line? Not transition line, but the main power line between Alamogordo and Cloudcroft.
The power line?
If all, if we can get timber sales underneath the power line, that entire area, it will kind of solve the solution of not being able to cut down the trees. We'd let go out to public.
Right. Well, what's the illusion of not being able to, or...
So they receive that grant or receive the authority to be able to clean the tree lines, anything that was below their line and I think 50 feet on each side for any kind of trees that are at risk of falling on the power line? And then that got closed down. So now can we open it up for timber sales and clean up that area?
So OC EC is still able to and is maintaining along that. I know they are working to address where they have hazards or where they prioritize their workload. I haven't thought of using a timber sale. Really, the maintenance of that right of way has been their responsibility. And at least in my tenure, we've not made that something they couldn't do. We've encouraged and tried to assist in their, their ability to hire a contractor and do that.
Okay. I think there's some confusion there because I went to the co-op meeting last weekend or weekend before and that's what they requested, if we could try and figure out how to get timber sales underneath their power line.
Okay. So maybe they're looking at that as an alternative solution for getting hazard trees out of there versus them doing it? Is it what I'm hearing, maybe?
Yeah, if we could, so if we could just call him, I can't remember the name.
Mario, maybe?
Yes, Mario, yeah, yeah. If you can contact him and see what I'm missing communicating to you.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
This has public hearing on here at 9:05. Is that a, is that...
It's not meant to be on there.
Because I just saw it and I was like, uh-oh, it's still not 9:05. Okay, and we didn't pull anything from the consent. You've got all your questions answered?
CA 6.
CA 6. Did you have anyone? Okay, we're going to pull CA 6 for discussion and I'll go ahead and read the rest of them. Okay, number one, request approval of accounts payable bills, BL1, BL2, BL3, BL3A, and BL4. Number two, request approval of resolution number 8-14-25/114-06, a resolution expressing Otero County's appreciation of Thrive's annual day of caring and commitment to provide county resources in support of the event. Number three, request approval of resolution number 8-14-25/114-07, an agreement between Otero County and Southeastern New Mexico Economic Development District Council of Governments for the fiscal year of 2025, 2026 in the amount of $8,000. Number four, request approval to ratify an intergovernmental agreement between Otero County and the 12th Judicial District. Number five, request approval of healthcare assistance claims and disposition claims for August 2025. Number seven, request approval to submit grant applications to N M Emergency Medical Systems Bureau, Local Systems Improvement Projects EMS Vehicle Purchase Project and Statewide EMS System Improvement Project. Number eight, request approval of a memorandum of understanding between Otero County and Holloman Air Force Base to establish a cooperative and a responsible working relationship between Holloman Air Force Base. Number nine, request approval to pursue approval from Bureau of Land Management to erect a permanent building on the shooting range. And number 10, request approval of the renovation of the existing septic system for the Sidney Paul Gordon Shooting Range in the amount of $9,600.
I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're pulling number six, request approval of property liens for reimbursement of unclaimed decedent disposition services for August 2025, and Amber's not here, so...
And maybe you know, RB. So on her request to put a lien on Mr. Harmon's property, normally it's a $1,000 lien on a property. This proposal is a $1,000 lien on, it's a $1,000 lien on each property of Mr. Harmon's. So that'd basically be $2,000 lien.
They got the same address too.
So I believe that, I mean, it's, it's one lien for a thousand, but it is applied to both properties. And in that case, if, if one were to sell and it satisfied the $1,000, then the lien would be extinguished. So it's not, it's not $1,000 for each, to each property.
So who keeps track of that? That we, okay, this one's sold and we have this earmarked, okay, now we can take it off of that. It just, it, it seems like it's a chance of collecting it twice.
I'm pretty sure Amber's tracking all of these. I have to double check, but...
Well, that's...
So, Amy, what it looks to me like is that it's, they're the same address, but they're two different lots that were joined together. Because if you look at the addresses, notice the lien, notice the lien, and then come over here, you got lot five, lot four, lot four. So that's, I'm just wondering if it's, he had two lots and then they were combined?
I don't know. I just, I just didn't see that it was fair to put it on two different properties. That's all.
Get the, yeah, the lot.
I see your concern. Just to be sure, so that we don't inadvertently double charge, so to speak. We can table it and I can talk to Amber. Maybe we do a single lien with both properties on that.
Okay, perfect. I'd like to make a motion to table the request of approval for property liens of reimbursement of unclaimed decedent deposition services for August.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're going to move on ahead just a little bit under new business. We're going to let Sheriff Black go to his two items, number 17 and 18, so he can get back to the conference.
Good morning again.
Good morning again.
We're going to start with 17 first?
Sure, yes.
Basically, what is, what is wanting to do here is ask for $100,000 of the opioid funds to enhance our DARE program here in, in Otero County. We have taken on several schools in Chaparral. We're going to start in Tularosa this year, Cloudcroft, La Luz, a few more schools. We got people reaching out to us to get this DARE program back in the schools. When I taught DARE 20 years ago, it was drug abuse resistance education. And basically, we talked about the, the bad effects, you know, drugs and stuff like that. The whole curriculum has changed now. Not only do they talk about, you know, the effects of drugs and stuff like that, but they go into social media, peer pressure, a whole gamut of, of different things that... And, and here's, here's kind of why I'm, I'm pushing DARE is this, this is an opportunity for us to get into and visit with these kids when they're in the fifth grade and start kind of maybe planting that seed, you know, hey, this, this is what you're going to be facing someday. Can we help, you know, educate them on some of the bad things that, that we see in society right now? And I think this is a great opportunity for our deputies to get into the schools. We're not there on a call. We're not there on a disturbance. We are just engaging with those kiddos and, and talking with them, trying to express to them, you know, again, this, this is what you're going to be faced with. Here, here's some solutions. Here's how you can handle that. So basically, what I'd like with the money, I would like to host a training here in, in New Mexico. Basically, we would host it. We've found that if we host it with the, the college in Riedoso, we get a great turnout. So we'd like to use some of that to host that, to get more DARE officers certified so that we can get there, you know, not only here in Otero County, but we can assist in getting some of these other people certified and start teaching in, you know, other jurisdictions throughout the state. At our conference up here, we got three or four sheriffs that was talking with, under Sheriff Robles. He is basically the state coordinator for DARE. They, there's a lot of interest. So we would like to host one of those trainings here and try to help get some of these other agencies certified in, in DARE to, to help them teach in their jurisdictions. Rest of it would be for, you know, buying, we, we got to have books. We got to have the education material and stuff like that to go into classes and stuff. So that's, that's, that's what our, our plan is. That's why we're asking for the money. I just appreciate your consideration on it.
Are you allowed to take them on a field trip to Central in Albuquerque?
Wish I could.
You want to look like that? All your teeth gone?
Jaw jacking down the street?
Laying on the park bench?
The last thing I'll tell you right now is, is every year after DARE, we have a DARE picnic. We get in the, in the park. It probably won't be in a park this year. I think that they've had some, there's some issues with, you know, the animals and stuff like that. Because we have, last year, we had 600 kids in the park, you know, it was kind of traumatic for the animals and stuff, so...
Traumatic for the humans.
We're looking at possibly relocating it, the DARE picnic. But then again, we're going to have the same thing. We're going to have 600 kids bust in from Otero County to include the, the ones from Chaparral. And it, it's just a picnic that we like to put on and congratulate them for their efforts. And, you know, because they all write essays on what they learned. And we always pick a winner, essay winner. And some of the local businesses, they donate a lot of prizes and stuff that, that we give away at the picnic. Essay winners, you know, they get a new bicycle. And so it's, it's a very rewarding program for us. When I was teaching, I was like, ah, am I making a difference? Because I didn't see it. But it took several years down the road to see these kids come back to us and say, you know, I'm not in that environment anymore because you taught me how to get out of it.
That's great.
So I'm going to keep pushing it really hard. I would just, I'm asking for a little help here.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. It's a good way to spend that opioid money.
I make a motion to request approval to commit $100,000 in opioid funds to enhance the DARE program at the Otero County Sheriff's Office.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The second item I'd like to address is, we all know that John Emery has, or Lieutenant Emery now, has taken on a pretty monumental task within the county trying to help just with IT all over the county. Due to some unforeseen circumstances with his, his father and stuff, you know, he had to be gone for just about a month, taking care of his dad and then taking care of his estate after he passed. So I would like to get a temporary IT position so that I can get applications and hire an IT person that can train with John. I think the end of 2026, that's when I told him he could leave.
Right.
But that's not when he's eligible to leave. So we'll see how that goes. But I would, I would like to get this temporary position, hire an IT person that can train with John, that can learn what, what's at the jail, what's needed, still needed at the jail, road shops. You know, when John got back, I, I told him first, the item on your list is get Eric's building fixed up out there so they can get moved out there. And he took care of it. He's just, he's got a lot of irons in the fire. So I, I need somebody that I can get in there and train with John up to when, when John retires, this person can take over.
I think that's a great idea. John knows so much more about our dispatch, you know, all the software, everything.
It's not just Sheriff's Office. It's Sheriff's Office, dispatch, jail, courthouse, road shops, buildings and grounds, you know. He is all over the county. And I, I don't want to take a chance on him throwing his retirement paper at me and...
Getting a surprise.
And I don't have somebody there to, to pick up the slack. So again, I just request this temporary position, get somebody in to train with him.
Temporary, that'll turn into hopefully full-time once John retires.
Once John retires, yes. It would go to a full-time. They would move into that full-time position.
What does it cost to have one of those IT companies come in and do it? Because, you know, we had, even Alamogordo has an IT company that manages everything. And that IT company manages several municipalities and all that. What is it?
We've never looked into that. It would involve us eliminating all of the IT department and hiring a company to come in and manage everything. We wouldn't want to piecemeal it.
Yeah, I would, I would want to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we did that at the company I worked for before and it's...
We lose control too.
Very expensive.
So I know like Riedoso has an IT company for their 911 center, Socorro. We're going to end up losing control for a lot of the systems in place. We won't have that administrative rights anymore.
Okay, got it.
And I think with this person training with Lieutenant Emery and then working with John's, you know, IT person out at dispatch... And I think with this person training with Lieutenant Emery and then working with John's, you know, IT person out at Dispatch, I think we, it, it could be a good combination, working together and... I think, I think right now, there, there's some stuff that, well, we need to open some stuff up to Camille at, at Taborda, which, you know, John's IT person, so I just think that collaborative effort right now is we get them working together will, will, will be better in the long run.
I couldn't find in here what their pay was.
Well, we're still kind of working on that, so. It has a job description attached, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. That's something we, I think we still need to kind of consider. My guess, to get somebody in here that's gonna do that, it's, it's gonna be probably in the eighty to eighty-five thousand dollar range.
As a permanent position, but not as part-time?
It's, it's full-time, but it's temporary, so.
Yeah, it's still full-time. It's not part-time.
When that person would move into Emery's position, the temporary position would then be eliminated. So he'd only have the one person in.
Okay.
Basically shadowing and training under Emery for a solid year.
Emery's gonna love that.
He is.
Does he know about it?
Oh yeah, he knows about it.
Is he watching the meeting?
Probably is. We've, we've talked about it. We've actually talked with a couple of people who are interested and I'll be honest with you, when they come in and talk with me, you know, the, the tech world is...
Greek.
It's not me. They were, so I brought John in and I said, yo, visit with him, let, let's talk, and they talked. I listened, I didn't understand about half of it because it's IT stuff and that's, you know, it's not my strong suit. So afterwards, I say, what do you think? And he, yeah, that one would work, that one would work. So, but we'll, yeah, if we get the position authorized, then we'll, we'll do the formal, you know, interviews and stuff like that. But then again, I'll, I'll have to have Lieutenant Emery in there to decipher what they are saying. They, they talked all kinds of stuff. It was like another language, you know?
Yes.
I didn't understand it.
And, and I'm all for it, David, but I have to ask this question. Why can't our IT department here take care of that?
I think we have become so, what would I say, kind of sophisticated with different... I, I think they probably could, but they would have to go to weeks and weeks and weeks of training to get and spun up on all that, just like all the stuff at Taborda. This, this is totally different software on, on all this, this, the new technology and stuff. I think it would probably be Greek to them right now. I mean, we would have to do the same thing. We would have to send them, they would have to sit with John or, or train with John for, for about, about the same time, a, a year of, of training for them to understand between, you know, flex and carbine and all that stuff. It's, there is lots and lots to it that they would have to be educated, you know, to a very higher, higher level to, to understand all of the, the stuff that goes on. Plus, they would have to, not only Sheriff's Office and Dispatch, but it's all tied in. Courthouse, jail, I mean, we're all one big network and stuff and it... Yeah. We, we would be doing the same thing with this IT that we would be doing with this person here.
I just, I just kind of find that we have four IT people and they just, evidently, they just take care of this building and that building and that's it. Sounds to me like it's what I'm trying to figure out.
No more questions?
No more questions.
Okay, I make a motion for the approval to recreate a temporary IT position within the Otero County Sheriff's Office.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I have one more question for you, maybe, I don't know if you know or not. Artesia School Systems has a camera system and some sort of a sound system so that they can identify when somebody's carrying a gun onto campus and then it sends it off to some verifier, yes, that is a gun, and the sheriff's office is notified. And it also, if a shot is fired, it can identify the caliber of the weapon too. Is it, do our schools have something like that?
Not that I am aware of. I know through trainings and stuff, you know, conferences and stuff, there's nothing up here right now that, that has that. There are some companies out there. I was trying to think where we were at. I believe it was in Oklahoma City. I, I sent through a, a quick demo over there. And, and basically, yeah, AI, it, it recognizes just makeups of like, you know, right now, if I was to walk through it and it saw this right here, it would, it would give an alert. It, it is. This is crazy. It is, it, it could be very, very helpful. The gunshot detection and stuff, Albuquerque's got those all over the, the city over there now, so. That technology is out there. It's very expensive.
Yep.
And that's why a lot of people, they, they have to grant, they'll have to go to grants and stuff like that to get that money to, to buy that stuff, so. But yeah, the technology is there.
I think we talked, I think you and I talked about one of those types for the, potentially for the new courthouse.
Oh.
Yes. I, I requested that so that, so right now, the courthouse, you know, you walk in, you gotta unload your pockets, it's gotta be, go through the x-ray machine, you gotta go through the magnetometer and, and all this stuff. There is a system that has basically two poles like that, that it's, it's not a narrow lane, it's a wider lane, so people can just walk through, but a deputy would sit over here watching the screen and computer and stuff. And if that detects, you know, guns, knives, stuff like that, then we would, we would secondary them and, and search them, just make sure they don't have anything that's not allowed in the courtroom. So I have requested, you know, with the, the planning and stuff on the courthouse, that we get one of those systems to put in the courthouse. Not only is it, it's gonna help us detect stuff, but it's also going to make it a little easier on people coming into the courthouse. Somebody walks in with a notebook or something like that, you know, we don't have to scan all that stuff. It's gonna tell us if it's there. It just, it'll make it easier on the public so that we're not, you know, we're not detaining them, you know, unreasonable amounts of time or anything like that. It'll make it easier for, for all the people coming into the courthouse.
I like that. I'm tired of taking off my belt.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to eliminate.
Great.
So the technology's there, we'll just see if we can, we can get it implemented.
Great. That's all I got?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Drive safe up the mountain.
Oh, I will.
So now we'll go back to scheduled citizens communication. Sheri Moore?
I'm back.
Good morning.
So I, I wanted to spend a few minutes going back over some of my prior conversations. So we, the Dollar DG Market is, got a shell. And I'm still extremely concerned about speeding around there because of the way that the road curves. One of the homes there just before that building has big, huge pine trees. And if they're coming around and a truck turns on Valley View into, to drop off their load, there's potential of damage right away. And I wanted to see if you would still consider possibly some lights like you did with Bent? Or could we spend some time with speed analysis in that area? I know the city does kinds of things like that, don't they? Does the county?
Think they do the study.
We don't have the equipment for that and DOT will help us out with that if it's a state road. We don't have the equipment on county roads to do speed assessments, studies. But I could talk to Tom and see if there's some options.
I've actually already asked Tom for two flashing lights, like we put up in Bent, one on each side, so he's aware of it.
Okay. Well, it, it's, it's just, it's three houses down from me and we've had wrecks there on that corner. And now you, you have another variable put there. Then the next thing is, and I don't know if your road person is here.
He is not. He's sick today, so he's not here today.
So they're fixing to put in the culvert across Valley View and I, I hope that you all had an opportunity to see all the videos and, and pictures I sent to you of the kind of water. And if that culvert goes in, it is going to bury our alleyway off of Benito, between Benito and Calacadena. Which then begs the question, then you have Godby, which is the street over from Valley View. I think that one needs a culvert put in, maybe like the, the one that we did for Benito. I know it can't be a bar ditch, but it's gotta have some kind, there is just a slight path. We need to really look at that. Until the city is able to do their culvert, and I, I brought one of these reports, I was on this meeting for, for you guys to look at. I think it may help the water diversion. We still haven't had as enormous gully washer as maybe Al Magordo had here just recently, but nonetheless, it's a river and in that alley is our water lines. So I'm not, I'm speaking to you as homeowner and I'm also speaking to you as the president of the Water Association. I know, Amy, you had, had requested that I be on this flood thing. We ain't get going. It's only gonna get worse. So I am really honestly asking you to consider all that.
I wasn't invited to this meeting, but it's my understanding that when the city does do that road, that they're gonna build that culvert to divert it into that arroyo that's on the east side of the houses?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct, but when? It's, you know, I've gotta go to the city board meeting and ask them. I was on this meeting and this was December tenth of twenty twenty-four. All right, well, we're almost at another year and that's not gonna help me, plus our patrons there in La Luce that are up to our eyeballs in water. I mean, we, as a board, approved DG Market to have water, installed it, but that culvert right there on that corner, the homeowner right across from them on Valley View, they have to have sandbags because the water pulls almost up to their house, so.
So where are they installing the culvert? I'm assuming for their driveway on Va- Valley View, right?
It's right there at Valley View and La Luce Road.
So it's gonna be the entrance of...
North south.
The culvert is gonna be on La Luce Road underneath it?
No.
It's gonna be...
North south of, here's La Luce Road, here's Valley View, they're putting it right there.
Okay.
Right now, we've got a swamp out front of theirs because the water doesn't, their holding pond doesn't eliminate the water, so we got buttloads of mosquitoes.
So that Valley View on, on the east side of the road, they put that culvert there, that water still has no place to go because we couldn't dig to clean out that easement because the utility lines are so shallow.
But is there, I mean, there's gotta be at least a little bit of being able to carve out?
I think when we looked at that last year, they were only eighteen inches deep, the utility?
Tom is listening and he's texting me and I'm trying to decipher everything we're discussing. One of the comments he made with the alley is that that's the water department's and they refuse to fix the culvert. That's not our responsibility. I asked him about all of these culverts for discussion, discussing if any were our responsibility and he said, no, none of them are ours.
What wasn't ours? What wasn't ours?
For the alleys, for the alleys, but Godby is a street. It is a county street there in La Luce.
Where's Godby?
It's one block south of Valley View.
Is it going under Godby or is it driveways?
No, it is a gravel road with houses. So you have...
Before Calacadena?
Right across from it. It's Poplar, Godby. So Kai, you have Benito, you have Calacadena, you have La Luce Road, then you have Valley View and you have Poplar, Godby.
Yes, on the east side.
Okay, and when it rains, it's, it's just flooding that road. So I don't know why there's not a culvert there, because that is road. Road in and there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, they're building a house right there on the corner of Poplar and Godby. There's, there's like ten homes there.
And that, that Godby Road is a county road?
He said it's not our culvert. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to confirm that, what he's telling me.
But Godby that I see comes off a section road. Is there another Godby that goes across that comes? Okay.
I mean, I understand, and we have discussed this before, that alleys are not our busi-, are your business. And the water department, we have discussed it, but we don't want to be liable, just like you guys don't want to be liable for that kind of stuff. But that bar ditch?
What was that utility? I can't remember, that was so shallow.
It was...
It's fiber, I bet.
Just to the south of Benito's here, the alley, and then to the south side of the alley, correct?
Can I?
Yeah.
Now, there we go.
This is where they started hitting the water lines and they stopped, yeah.
So this is where I'm talking about, all right? So here's La Luce Road. This is where the DG Market is. This little home here, he has put up berm after berm after berm to try and divert the water because of the gully washers down that road. Until the city, and the city is going to do their culverts from here all the way up to where we blocked off Valley View. And that's gonna come out this way.
Right.
But we need FEMA back here to do a flood plane because this used to be, and I've been in my home here for twenty years, there used to be rolling hills, you know, and all that kind of stuff. It is now flat and for all of us who've lived here, you know, water doesn't penetrate it. So it's just gonna get increasingly that way with our, our water. But this particular road right here, is that not county?
I don't know.
It is not paved like all these others.
That's why I'm thinking it's not county.
Commissioner's...
Are you, you talking about Valley that goes up?
No, that, no, no. It's this one block, this is gravel right here. So right now, La Luce property for the water department basically comes here, up and over. So right now, Laloos property for the water department basically comes here, up and over. And that's what our water department covers. I will bring it back to the board about culverts, but that bar ditch that's on our alley, it's still gonna flood. Even if we put a culvert in there, the amount of water coming in is literally three to five inches over Laloos Road. Then you add the caveat of the water eroding the road that y'all put in there chunks out. So it's, it's multifaceted issue.
Commissioners, I would, I would suggest that we give Ms. Moore and Mr. Porter and have a meeting separate from this and where we can maybe even go to a site visit, but get into the weeds on this. And then with that information, we can take it to the Corps of Engineers with the study we're working on right now. And, you know, getting this water before it, right at the base of the mountain is what needs to happen. I, I did notice kids had used the retention pond that Dollar General built. They, they used it as a swimming pool the other day.
Yes.
They were having a very good time.
Well, they're boys. They're six boys.
Yeah, if, if we do this like next week or something, we can look at it all and have Tom.
Yeah, but my, my question is, is DG connecting with the county to repair that road at the time of the culvert? That road is only one car accessible.
And the city is going to redo that entire road, right?
No.
That's what I was told.
But that road is on, Tom and I went up there and that road is on, it goes up just a little bit. I'm not sure he owns that part, but the part all the way up belongs to the city.
This is where it's, right here.
Right.
They will fix this road this way.
But that two-foot bar ditch on the north side of that road is what's causing all the problems. It's not a bar ditch, it's just a water washout.
It's a big, deep washout.
Yeah.
It's a river, yeah. But this is county, right here. And I thought that DG Market would be working with y'all to have this repaved, to have the road repaired. I mean, literally, you can only do?
But until that's fixed up above, I can see where Tom would not wanna fix that and waste money because it'll wash right out again if you fix that. Until the city fixes above. I, I mean.
I appreciate what you're saying. I get it. I totally get it.
And I mean, I understand they, and I believe Tom wants to fix it, but until that is fixed above, whatever we put in and redo, if we repave it, the first big rain is gonna wash it right out.
I think the road completely needs to be redone so that it can be a through road all the way to section, and that would help alleviate some of the traffic. That is, you know, and I know the city's intent is closing that down, which is closed now. But they can secure the water facility with a gate this way or this way, just the same. I, I still think if we were to able to open that all the way through, it'd help.
Well, again, one of my board member's brother lost a leg driving fast on Valley View years ago and that, so he's like, no, don't open that road. You know, their speed is a bad up section road, you know? But that's, that's, I just wanted to revisit this. I also wanted to ask the park that's in Laloos, kitty corner from the little Catholic church?
Presidio Park, and yes, myself and my buildings and ground supervisor are meeting next week with members of the community to discuss the maintenance of that park.
It's not so much the maintenance. This is on the water side. So in order for us to continue to maintain and manage the water for our community, we cannot donate water. It goes against USDA regulation. And so we pulled the water meter from the park.
Yes.
And my plant manager stated that the Catholic Church was getting ready for their little function in October. And we have it stipulated that whoever wants to utilize that, they have to put a deposit down in order to pay for the water usage that they have.
However, it's county property, so they would have to get a permit with us. The, the simplest method to fix this is for us to be billed for the water on the park and we handle it. And then we can handle permitting of usage of that park.
Oh.
Yes, and we are meeting with individuals next week to hash that out.
Well, it's good for me to know because, yeah.
Yeah. I have actually been researching, trying to figure out who's paying the bill. You know, I've been trying to figure that out as well.
Okay, perfect. But the, but the thing is, there is a leak.
Yes, and we're gonna fix it.
Because we don't want people to have to pay buttloads for water that just goes down the toilet.
Yeah, no, we're fixing it. We're on it. Love it. I've got more answers today.
So I text Tom, I asked him some questions on that. He's saying the city is going to fix that entire road plus move the power pole that's in the way.
All right, well, I'm.
I asked him, do you know when? And he said, no.
Well, I thank you commissioners again for taking the time to let me speak with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful area.
Please include me in, you know, the meeting. I won't be in town next week, but we're doing like a Monday after that. I would love to be a part of the meeting of onsite visits.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, for our unscheduled citizen communication, these are limited to three minutes. Reinhardt Sherman?
Thanks for letting me speak. I'll mention ahead of time, I'm hearing impaired. So if I'm having a hard time understanding it, I, I just thought I'd mention that. It's not them being rude. My name is Reinhard Sherman. I'm from Timberon. I'm here to introduce myself as I have requested to speak to the commission in September on a rising crisis in Otero County. Off-highway vehicles or OHVs have become larger, faster, and more dangerous than last decade. They are currently allowed to drive on roads in Otero County and the national forest, even though they state on the vehicles and on their tires that they are not designed for such use. They have no restrictions as other non-highway vehicles such as farm machinery, and they are not required by our county, Otero County MVD to have liability insurance to license, even though the state has an unenforceable statute requiring such insurance. On July 26th, my girlfriend Rebecca Turner and myself were in the forest on a county road named Agua Chiquita when we came across an unpermitted OHV rally between 500 and 1,000, such machines tearing up the forest and speeding down the county road while shooting firearms and drinking alcohol. As we attempted to vacate the area, we were prevented twice from doing so by trains of OHVs on Agua Chiquita, racing at speeds of over 50 miles an hour while running high-intensity strobe lights and blaring base cannons. Many of these hooligans were within inches of our stationary vehicle, and eventually one of them hit us head-on, requiring Rebecca to need ambulance service and emergency care. The driver of the vehicle refused to talk to me and give me his name or insurance. Without cellphone service and the refuse of all other, all other rallygoers to help us, we drove our disabled vehicle until we encountered an Otero County sheriff and Rebecca was transferred to an ambulance. In the aftermath of the assault, the OHV owner was not ticketed for improper insurance, reckless driving, which they admitted, DWI or open container. They had several opened and unopened beer cans in their vehicle, and they were allowed to take their damaged vehicle back to the state of Texas, where I have no legal recourse to lean their property until I'm compensated for Rebecca's trauma and my vehicle damage. Considering the staggering damage done by these race machines for our county roads, our forests, and especially our citizens, I will be requesting that Otero County Commission to restrict or outlaw the use of these non-road compliant vehicles on our roads and public lands until New Mexico chooses to regulate them in a safe and sane way. In closing, I would like to address those who say I want to punish all OHV owners for the crimes of a few. So let me be very clear. Of the 1,000 OHVs we encountered on July 26th, all of the owners were random, unrelated individuals from several states and Mexico. And yet not one did anything to stop the madness or aid our injured persons, but instead did everything in their power to circumvent New Mexico law. I look forward to presenting this issue to the board and the media and the general public at the commission meeting at the next session.
Thank you. Good timing. Okay, Robert. I don't know how to say this. How do you say your last name?
El Gersma.
El Gersma.
Well, I guess I'm gonna hit a sore subject. Because what I'm dealing with is in regards to OHVs, off-road vehicles. And what I made is a map of the area that I'm concerned about. I drive an OHV. My son does. But they're legal, they're licensed, and we got all the stuff that you need to do. We don't do off-road. We go on the trails. And what I'm looking at, from my understanding, coming, Cloudcroft is right to the top of the map there. That's what comes in. So what I was wondering, if Highway 6563 comes off of 130, about three miles, four miles south of Cloudcroft. And we come up through highways on the Car Canyon there, and we cross over 6563. So I guess I'm asking, can the county release that so OHVs, OH, off-road vehicles can go across that road if you go to a different part of the trails there?
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, RB, but like on a state highway, you're allowed to go straight across?
Right, but not any, you straight across only. But some of these are offset, so you'd have to go on the road itself for maybe a half a mile or something. And then you're getting ill, they go, believe me, I know. And if you go down 6563 down to Sunspot, then it's a county road, so you can drive on the county road again. So if that road could be made legal. And, you know, I'm just looking at if they would do 60 or 130 into Cloudcroft, then vehicles could come from Cloudcroft and go right into the back roads right there.
And that was one of the roads that we tried to get past that New Mexico DOT stopped.
Did they give a reason?
Safety.
On what, 130?
On 130 and I believe 6563. Some assessment of the, the curves and I, I, it didn't make sense to me because however they framed it, I immediately thought it was a motorcycle and it didn't seem to be a difference. Yeah, I mean, there's nothing precluding us from asking again, you know, and if it's more, more limited, then, you know, it's a possibility we'd have to address like point by point their safety concerns. Think we're gonna have a lot of discussions on OHVs in the next month or so, so.
Yeah, I gotta gather that. But anyway, that's the area I was concerned at, if that could be released so that the vehicles could run on that road.
Maybe we need the support of all the citizens that wanna use this rather than us just requesting. Let's let the citizens request it from the state as well, if we can get those contacts to them.
All right, thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
That was the last one. Okay, now we're gonna move on to new business. Number 14, request approval of resolution 08-14-25/114-08, disposition of personal property and fixed assets in accordance with state statute through govdeals.com and online auction service. Do you have any questions about that one? Can you vote on this one or do you need to?
I'm abstaining.
You're gonna abstain? Okay, all right. Okay, I make a motion for the approval of resolution 08-14-25/114-08, disposition of personal property and fixed assets in accordance with state statute through govdeals.com, an online auction service.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Commissioner Barilla abstained.
I almost second it.
I know. I know, I can hear, I can feel you drawing in your breath. Okay, number 15, request approval of resolution number 8-14-25/114-09, a resolution creating a treasurer's fee policy. I saw Carl come in.
Hello again.
Hello again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What is MH sales prep?
A manufactured house.
And isn't that just a release of a permit?
That is when they are delinquent for three years and since the county is actually responsible for that instead of the state for all mobile houses, we charge that fee and other counties do to recoup the cost of red tagging and stuff like that.
Commissioners, as you know, I did look into this and didn't find any issues with it. And as they provided, there's several counties that are doing it. And there's actually some statutes that suggest we have an obligation to charge some fees and recoup where we can.
I'm okay with the fees.
Yeah, I am too. It looks like we're, we're in line with the other counties that are doing it or less, so. Wanna make a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 081425/11409, a resolution creating treasurer's fee policy.
All second it? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, number, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 16, request approval of resolution 08-14-25/114-10, declaring the county's intent to designate a metropolitan redevelopment area, prepare a metropolitan redevelopment plan, and consider redevelopment tax abatement within the metropolitan. That is like a tongue twister for me. Holy crap, how many times I have to say this?
All right, Commissioners, Patriot Point Homes Development, Mr. Valencia presented last meeting requesting some type of economic incentive to facilitate the development of new apartments in Almagordo, which is greatly needed. And this is the way that it can be accomplished, especially in the tight timeline. We have till October 17th for him to be able to present something to the feds under the housing and urban development framework that he is using. housing and urban development framework that he is using to pursue this development. And, you know, the legislature saw a need for these types of developments to be facilitated. This would allow a seven-year tax abatement. He'd hoped for 10, but said seven would work. It's pretty much the only way we can do a tax abatement for this type of project. And so, just to address a few things, I do have Ian Bearden, who is one of our bond counsel from Module Sperling. Abe, can you make sure that Ian's on the screen and able to talk to us? So Ian's going to walk us through this process and provide you with a roadmap of what needs to happen. We do have the authority to do this, even though it's in the city, but because it is in the city, we do need the county, the city to pass an ordinance essentially agreeing with our assessment that the area contains blight and is in need of redevelopment. It's a pretty broad definition. I think it meets the case and it talks about a need for housing. We absolutely have that. We have a supply and demand issue, and housing is inflated because there's more demand than there is supply. And we are missing out on professionals coming to the area because there is a lack of housing. The assistant director at Taberta that was selected isn't coming because they weren't satisfied with the housing options and the cost. And then this also is an issue for Holloman and our service members, and they're needing housing. Offering tax abatements, tax credits, tax rebates is a way of areas attracting investment and development. If we're not doing it, other areas are going to, they wanna take Holloman, they want those resources, and without Holloman, this is going to be a very different place, and we need them, and we wanna take care of our service members. So the notion that this is some type of freebie, or, you know, how do we select who gets it and who doesn't, like, in my opinion, we should say, come invest, come develop, like, whoever wants this, we're willing to do what it takes to get investment and development here. And we need to reverse the mindset that for too long has been here, that if someone's making money off of it or getting something, then we don't want it because it's short-sighted and we're in the situation we're in where we haven't had development in over 20 years. And in the grand scheme of it, we spitballed the numbers, and if those are even reasonably accurate, we're talking $600,000, $700,000 of taxes over a seven-year period. That is nothing compared to the benefits that will be reaped from this development. So that's my two cents, and I'll let Ian speak and talk about what we need to do to make this happen.
I just, I just want, that's so well said. Thank you.
Good job.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. As RB mentioned, my name's Ian Bearden, and I'm with the Module Sperling Law Room. We're bond counsel to the county. The resolution that's before the county today is really just the very first step in this process, declaring that the county commission believes that there is blight in the county. It does not designate any particular area as being blighted. That designation will come later. As RB mentioned, the, I think the kind of the first hurdle that will need to be left over is getting cooperation from the city to adopt an ordinance declaring the necessity for the designation of this, of the particular area that we're talking about as being blighted in order to, in order to take really any further steps with respect to the proposed MR area, and how we avoid having to say metropolitan redevelopment over and over and over again because it's a tongue twister for everybody, is shorten it to MR. So that's what I'll be saying from here on out. In order to take any action with respect to the proposed MR area, the city will have to first adopt that ordinance declaring the necessity, and the reason for that is that the jurisdiction of the county and the jurisdiction of the city overlap in this proposed area. So if the, if the city does adopt a resolution declaring the necessity for the designation of this area as a, as an MR area, then there will need to be a public hearing on the matter. The public hearing has to be noticed two times, and the second notice has to, has to be published twenty, at least 20 days prior to the, the hearing on the designation. So, you know, with that being said, the sort of fastest feasible timeline that we could come up with for having a hearing at a, at a regular county commission meeting on the designation of the area as an MR area would be October 9th. And that would require that the city adopt its ordinance at its meeting in September. So this is a pretty short timeline in order to meet the, hopefully meet the needs of the developer in getting something that he can show to the feds in early, mid-October. And frankly, even that doesn't finish out the process of making this an MR area because then there would need to be a plan produced, an MR plan, which would set out what exactly, what public projects are being done within the newly designated MR area. Development of the plan can certainly progress concurrently with, with the designation of the MR area as such, but it can't be approved until after the area has been designated. And then at that point, there is a limitation of actions period. So if somebody who owned property within the proposed MR area felt aggrieved by the designation of that area as an MR area, they have, see, I believe it's 20, 20 days to bring an action to set aside the designation, and then you have to have two public hearings on the MR plan. So it really is a fairly complicated and potentially long process to get from where we are today to approval of an MR plan for the development of that property. However, the designation, we're hopeful that the designation of the property as MR area would be sufficient for the developer to, you know, to have something concrete that the county has, an action that the county has taken to be able to, so that the feds to, to be able to nail down their financing. Once the MR plan has been adopted, we just would have to publish notice of the plan, and then, and then the plan would, would take effect at the point that notice was published. So again, I think if, if everything went exactly perfectly, you know, which is not always the case, certainly, the earliest we could really get a, an MR plan in front of the county commission would be, or, I'm sorry, the earliest we could have a MR plan approved would be at the December county commission meeting. And, you know, again, it's, it's possible that this timeline slips, but as long as, you know, undertaking the process is sufficient for the developer, you know, that may work. As far as the resolution goes, this resolution, as I mentioned, essentially provides that the commission believes that there do exist within the jurisdiction of the county blighted areas, and that it is important to, for the safety and promotion of, of public, of the public's interest, it's important to designate this area as blighted and provide for the redevelopment of that area. It does, again, it does not relate to the specific area at issue here. It's, it's a much broader resolution that's required before you can really get the process started. It directs county staff to undertake the, the legal and administrative process that's necessary to get this, this designation and MR plan process started and rolling. And, and really, that's about it for this resolution. If the commission passes this resolution, we would, again, be working to cooperate with the city of Alamogordo to have their ordinance adopted, and then we would start publishing notices of hearings for, for designation of the particular MR area. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so October 9th is a regular commission meeting day. What is it that we need to present on October 9th?
So assuming that the, the city of Alamogordo adopts its ordinance prior to that, you know, finding the necessity for the designation, the meeting on October 9th would be a public hearing on the designation of the, of the area. So, you know, in order to have it designated, in order to designate it as blighted, in order to include it within an MR plan, you have to have a public hearing.
I say we go ahead and schedule it on our October 9th in hopes that the city does their part, and then if they don't, then I guess we cancel it.
We could do the public meeting on the next commission meeting, too, in September, and have it done before then.
I'm okay with that, too. Are we okay with doing it that way?
Unfortunately, no. In order, in order for the county to take any official action with respect to the actual, the actual proposed MR area issue, because it does overlap without Alamogordo's jurisdiction, the county can't take any official action with respect to that particular area until the, until the city has adopted its ordinance declaring the necessity for that action.
So the county cannot do anything until the city has done their part?
That's correct. The MR code includes the term "area of operation," which is anywhere within the jurisdiction of the county. However, it provides that if that jurisdiction overlaps with the jurisdiction of any other municipality or local government, then you can't take any official action with respect to that particular area until that other local government has adopted an ordinance finding that, that that action is necessary.
Okay, October 9th it is? We don't need to vote on that, right?
Just the resolution.
Yep.
You wanna make a motion, or do you want me to do it?
Alamo for it, doesn't matter.
Yeah, okay.
First, I, you know, wanna say thank you to our treasurer, Carl, our assessor, James, and RB for having a can-do attitude and doing everything it possibly took to get this done.
Yeah.
And hopefully that we have the follow-through cooperation.
Yeah.
Because absolutely what RB said earlier was spot-on, and we need this, we wanna do whatever we wanna do.
All right. Okay, I make a motion for the approval of resolution 08-14-25/114-10, declaring the county's intent to designate a metropolitan redevelopment area, prepare a metropolitan redevelopment plan, and consider redevelopment tax abatement within the metropolitan redevelopment area.
I'll second the MR.
Yes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good job, RB, and everybody that's concerned. And Carl, I talked to Damion Lara, who's the assessor for Bernalillo County, and he said that he thinks if, if this doesn't work, there's still maybe a way that we can do it, just the county on our own. So would you please reach out to Damion? Do you have his contact information?
I can get it.
Okay, because I can give that to you just as backup.
Okay.
Okay, because we, we're gonna get this done.
Thank you.
That would be good news. I have made some calls that have said the opposite.
Okay. Well, I talked to him last week. So, yeah, because they've done this in Albuquerque, so I don't know on that TRA, so check with them, and just, just so we have a backup.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we've done 17 and 18, so 19, request approval of an on-call duty paid schedule at the rate of $10 to $15 an hour with a annual cost of $7,300 to $10,950 added to the Tulare Basin Regional Dispatch Authority budget as special pay. Hello again.
Hi.
I kinda get this because I know that a lot of times law enforcement is kinda halfway expected to be on-call. I know that we went through this in Cloudcroft, and they expect you to be on-call, but they don't expect to pay you for anything unless you get a call. So that limits, you can't go out to dinner and have a beer, you can't, I mean, you're basically working without getting paid for it. So I know this, sometimes these are kinda hard to understand, but that's the easiest way for me to wrap my mind around it, is if you expect people to be on-call, be at your, you know, mercy or...
If someone, the point of it is being short-staffed right now, trying to get people in on their days off to come and assist with overtime, so we're staffed on the floor properly.
Right.
This is kind of like an incentive for people to want to be on-call, and they receive that little extra money to be available for that day if someone calls out sick, or we need immediate coverage, or say it gets really hectic. We've had days where it gets really hectic, we need to bring people in. Those are the people we reach out directly. And I also think it's a good recruitment tool, too, because a lot of centers don't do it, and there are centers that do do it, and I think this is a good recruitment tool for us that people are, you know, we can advertise saying, there's an on-call pay to schedule that we have, where people can make that extra little dime to help their families out or stuff like that in need.
I absolutely support it.
I do, too. I think it's a great idea.
Commissioners, before you go much further on that, I just want you to be aware this is an issue that we have with the detention center and sheriff's office as well. If we do this for one department, we should consider doing it for the other two as well.
Okay.
But we would have to come back and show you those costs.
Okay.
So John, is this a rotation position, or is this a volunteer that signs up and says, I'll, I'll be there, I'll do that today, or I'll do that this week?
The way we kinda, I kinda broke it down was, depending on what you guys approve, if it's the $10 or the $15, that's where it would be. And then we would open up like an on-call schedule where they can go and sign up their name. I'm like, oh, you know, I'm free these days, I, we can sign up these days. And there may be days that, we don't have anybody signed up, so we're not paying anybody for that on-call day. But this would hopefully help that time where people are willing to step up and kinda take that initiative. And as we bring in some of these new hires, I think we'll be able to fill it. But again, it confirms that we have somebody, if someone is to call out or, you know, has to take vacation and we can't fill it, we know that we have somebody coming in to cover those, those spots.
Anything else?
Nope. So do we determine what the rate per hour is going to be at this point?
Yeah, so it's a flat rate of $10 a day for a day shift and a night shifter, or 15 a day shifter, night shifter. If we did the $10 a total for the year, it would be $7,300. If we did the 15, it would be $10,950.
Is it $10 a day or $10 an hour on the day?
No, it would be $10 just for the day. It's a flat rate for the day.
Oh, this is an hour? Oh, $10 to $15 an hour.
Okay, that, that's wrong. But it's, it's 15, it should be 15 per shift, or 10 for per shift.
Shift.
That's how it is. It's just shift, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna change that on here.
And per the, for the 12-hour on-call schedule that day would be on.
Okay. Well, I would, I would go for the fifteen if it's per shift.
Absolutely.
I mean, you work at frickin' McDonald's for fifteen dollars, you know what I mean? It's just like, you gotta kinda keep it in perspective, what they're, the stress they're under.
I'll make a motion for approval on-call duty pay schedule at the rate of fifteen dollars per shift with an annual cost approximately seventy-three hundred to ten thousand nine hundred and fifty, added to the Tulare Basin Regional Dispatch Authority budget as a special pay.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any, that word need to be changed?
Yes.
I just changed it in my motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
You, too.
Okay, number twenty, request approval for Friends of La Luz Range to apply for a grant for a metal structure and approval to place portable buildings onto the premises for the purposes of classrooms. Hello?
I'll introduce myself again, I'm Warren Canyon, I'm the president of Friends of La Luz Range, or Faller. I have our vice president, Bill Butler, back there, and uh, Mark Douglas is the range director. Um, I noticed on the announcement it didn't say, where did we want to place the building?
Yeah, where do you want to place the building?
Imagine, imagine, let's think.
Yeah.
Probably on the shooting range.
Yeah. Is it gonna be on top of the septic sink? On top of the septic sink?
No, we already have a building there, we don't need another one.
Well, since we're-
Future septic tank.
Okay, okay.
Well, since we're gonna get the other one repaired, um, I have a handout for you all, and uh, I apologize for not having it in your packet. Um, because when I came by, the building was closed Friday, and then I was out the first part of the week, so would you mind?
I'm not even used to the closed on Friday yet, I show up all the time, too.
I do, too. I just come in the side door. Thank you.
And Mark, if you would, these also, thanks, Mark. Thank you.
You guys are gonna mess around and have the best shooting range in New Mexico.
Best shooting range in Otero County.
Well, we already got that.
Winning team is hard.
Well, we'll, we'll accept any type of accolade that you want to give. Okay, uh, what Friends of La Luz Range does, obviously, we support the Sidney Paul Gordon Shooting Range here in Otero County. We have for the last six years, and we plan to continue. This is the first year that New Mexico Outdoor Recreation Division, uh, the Outdoor Recreation Trails Plus Grant has been open to nonprofits. So we are going to jump on the opportunity to apply for this grant. Okay, what are we gonna do with it? Well, the main purpose is we want to, um, get enough money to be able to build a structure and put the structure out there, something similar to that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and as the grant proceeds, we can also add on to it later on. This is a two-year grant, so since it's our first opportunity, I thought we needed to come and step forward. And one, I talked to Pam, and thank you so much, um, for meeting with me, um, to say, "Let's uh, not get the cart before the horse. Let's see if you're on board with us even doing this before I put all the time in, you know, applying for the grant itself." And so that's the first part, is would you approve us, Faller, to apply for the grant? And then getting it, use the funds to put a structure out on the shooting range. With understanding that we would come back after approval, uh, with the designation of what funds we give, because we could apply all the way up to five hundred thousand dollars. Well, being a one-for-one match, our nonprofit isn't quite that big yet to go all the way. But with putting the feelers out to the different organizations in town, and what we feel we could come up with as far as a match, we're thinking close to a hundred thousand.
So Faller would have the match, not the county?
Correct. We don't want to put a burden on the county in any way, shape, or form, but we're always interested in any assistance anyone wants to give, our 501(c)(3). Um, and so that's the first part of that. The guidelines on what type of structure under what we're applying for would be classified as an outdoor classroom, since we're an education foundation. Um, and looking at the structures that they have shown, I think that would work for us really well. And then later on, through other grants, we could eventually move forward and maybe improve those by putting maybe other structures underneath them, say like a small office or something like that, or something closed. And I'm hoping for any questions.
So, this is a grant application for a three-year process.
Two.
Two, two years?
Yeah, we would, we would say two, 'cause we're only eligible for tier one and tier two.
Okay, so we approved this, this year, and next year, what is our guarantee that you're gonna have that match?
Uh, we plan to, one, um, work on when we apply for the grant. We have to submit the grant by September thirtieth for it to be accepted. By that time, I should have a plan in place on how we're going to come up with the funds for the match. Um, and then at that time, I'm not going to just put it in there, "So, well, here, we want five hundred," you know, cut it down on whatever you think. I want to go in with specific plans, here's what we're going to do. Um, there's a myriad of types of buildings that can go out there, even some that can be, uh, self-help erected type structures, um, with some of the, uh, steel buildings that I've noticed that are being advertised, they've come down in price greatly. So that's another thing that we would like to do. But as we take these steps, we would like to come back to the commission and say, "Here's our next step, here's our next step." And actually with a plan of what we're going to do. Um, since it's our first time, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, we've had good luck with our grant applications in the past. But again, this is a first time for an infrastructure grant, so I'm hoping we do it right, but there's always that opportunity to say, "Let's get more information, let's hold off, apply another time."
And is this, so I'm assuming Pablo's helping with the grant process, too?
Right now, it's only been Faller that's been doing this, and I've been talking with economic development and their folks, and folks that they've recommended us to contact with us. But we'll work with anyone you'd like to recommend.
And Pam, is this where that, so one that we just passed with the agreement, that they pick up and help with this grant as well? To make sure we get this grant? This uh-
The, the one you approved before was to get BLM's approval to put buildings on, because it's a lease, we don't own the property. Um, and that was just so that we can go ahead and get that paperwork into BLM, that you're okay with us placing additional buildings on the property. They won't help with the grant.
So will the Southeastern New Mexico Economic Development Council help with their grant?
I don't know if they're willing to write the grant for them, because they're not a governmental organization.
But we just paid them eight thousand bucks to help with grants.
For the county, for our grants. This is not a county organization. They can't manage-
Now we're co-mingling.
They can't apply, yeah.
Okay, because we have to approve a private organization to do their grant?
No, this is just so you're okay with us moving forward for the building, basically. They can apply for a grant without your approval, 'cause we're not gonna be the fiscal agent. This is if you're okay, us putting a permanent structure there, and mobile, in mobile-
That's not what it says.
Okay, what our grant is requesting is for us to be able to apply for the grant, to be able to, uh, purchase or have a kind of structure built. Okay, where would we put that structure? Remember at the beginning? I can't put that structure even in the application as far as Sidney Paul Gordon without your approval saying, "Yes, Faller is allowed to put a structure on the Sidney Paul Gordon Shooting Range." And we would need something in writing that would go with the application and say, "Yes, you approved Faller putting a structure on the property."
I definitely support that, and I support it to the extent where I want to get you all the support needed to make sure you are awarded this grant.
Thank you.
And if we just paid a company to do it-
It's not a company. It's, it's an offset of, of government, and they write and prepare and search for grants for us and help in those, but they can't do it for a nonprofit. They aid those members that pay into, and that would be Otero County. If it were a grant we were looking for, they could help.
Mm-hmm.
And, and his, his purpose isn't, is so much the grant, because we're not participating in the grant financially, we're not the fiscal agent, but they have to have approval that if he gets this grant, they can put the building there. That's what we're looking at here.
I agree.
Yep.
So, I don't know what resources we can give you for helping to get the grant, but I want, if we can find anything to help you dot every single I and cross every T, I, I want to offer that, too. I don't, but obviously-
No, and, and my office is available, and Mark's available, and we've met already, and I, if we need to help in any way that we legally can, we will. Yes, definitely.
And to, to boast, um, or promote, uh, New Mexico Economic Development, they've been exceedingly helpful. Uh, and they offer constantly, even to the point of extra webinars that you'd want to go to or review past webinars on how to apply for the grants. And then the other resources, they don't have a problem with saying, "Hey, contact this county, contact this organization, they applied for a similar grant, see if they can give you some input."
Okay.
That's good.
Okay, good.
Yep.
So I want it one thousand percent successful.
Yes.
Okay.
No pressure.
No pressure, no pressure.
Well, this is, this is a big step for us also, is what we're looking for. So we need that approval. And then the second part is, uh, the picture that I sent, uh, gave, uh, Mark passed out, uh, is an aerial view of the shooting range, um, and the location of where we would like to put a portable building. Uh, Faller was, uh, had the opportunity to, uh, bid on a portable building that used to be, or is still, at La Luz Elementary School. I'm very familiar with that since I retired from the school district. Um, looked at the building, it's, it's very sound. Um, but again, uh, one, I didn't want the opportunity for a great deal on a building go away. If you look on the internet for portable buildings like this, the closest you're gonna come is ten thousand dollars. We were able to secure it for over eleven hundred dollars. And then, uh, yeah. And then, now, don't get me wrong, it's gotta be moved.
Yeah.
And there's a, there's a hefty fee with that, that's about sixty-five hundred dollars to move. But again, talking to the company in Chaparral that moved portables for the school district in the past, they are at their lull, since school has already started, they're not shifting buildings around, so they have time to do that. Um, so one, the next is, we would like your approval that we could place a portable building on the shooting range property for use by the range, by Faller, by, uh, through coordinated scheduling, obviously. Um, and we don't want to burden the county with maintenance on it. Let Faller take care of the maintenance, and we maybe be a little later on, share some of the cost that comes down to maintain, but let us get it fair first, let us get it in place, and then, uh, we come up with a plan how we're going to schedule, and what else we need to do to it.
Do we, we also have to have BLM's approval?
Yes, any, any modifications to the property, whether it be new buildings, roads, we have to have BLM approval. So what we'll have to do is prepare an application, and we'll have to have a, a diagram of where on the property we're gonna place, what's permanent, what's, we, we've done this before, um, like with the road department, we had to get approval for Eric to build his building. So it's, it's not something we're unfamiliar with.
And did you buy this on GOV deals, or?
Actually, uh, Public Surplus is the one that the school district uses. They kinda pressured us a little bit, because, uh, one, um, the timing was really, uh, good, but, um, bad when it came to payment. Um, they, uh, put a tax amount on there, a sales tax, which didn't qualify for our organization. We sent them all the documents, but it took time for them to remove the tax. But in the meantime, Public Surplus calls and emails me and says, "If you don't pay this now, you're gonna be in default." So we went ahead and, Faller, myself, went ahead and paid for it, and, um, we'll work with the, uh, school district to be refunded the tax. But in the meantime, we're moving forward.
And you're required to move the property within a certain timeline, too. How, how are we working with them?
Thank goodness they have, they don't have an immediate need for the land where it is in the parking lot, and I've worked with the school district on this, and so we're hoping we could get this within the next four to five weeks.
Okay, and everybody's okay with that?
So far.
Okay, good.
Is that a power pole that's right there on the corner of it?
It is.
It is?
That would be already- That was a strategic spot that we thought we could, uh, we'd get the electricity drop there, probably have to have a transformer, and then, because the line comes up from, uh, the Rock Cliff Road and then into the range. And then the next pole where there is a transformer is quite a ways away.
Okay.
Any more questions?
But we don't need to give them approval for a grant, we're giving them approval for a building location, so we need to reword this?
Well, the way he has it is, as he said, he needs something for his grant saying, "Approve putting the property there." So, yeah, the, the way it's worded is fine. And then I can write a letter stating, "Yes, Otero County has approved this, we have the minutes of supporting documentation."
Okay. Well, I make a motion to request approval for the fun, Friends of La Luz Range to apply for the grant for a metal structure and approval to place the portable buildings onto the premises for the purpose of classrooms.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Yay, thank you.
Hopefully it was a little clearer than mine.
It was.
Thank you so much. Um, I did have some pictures of the portable building, and I apologize for not giving this to you, because why did I take pictures? Uh, one, because, um, while the portable building is this old, I was very impressed with the condition that it's in. Um, it used to be used as a, um, computer lab, so the computer tables would actually come out. But if you want me to look at these?
I think my last year at La Luz School was the first year that they put that building up. And so my computer lab was still inside the building, but, but the next year it wasn't.
Looks like it's a pretty good history.
Jay Doc was the principal.
He's my neighbor.
I never got to visit the principal, so I don't know. I was a really good kid.
See, there's-
Kid been thrown off.
Yeah.
So, um, and the only thing that the mover asked me to do was do a thorough inspection of the, uh, steel frame that the building sits on to make sure that there's no cracks, and I even took some pictures of that, it's very, very solid.
And, and what was the size of this building?
It's twenty-eight feet by thirty-two feet.
And like, so when they move it, power lines and, and that kind of stuff?
That's the reason why the expansion, it looks costly, because they come out, look at it all, also check what route, there's only three routes they could take to get to the range, uh, from where it sits right now. Um, but again, assurances from our little enterprises, Richard Little, who does this for a living, moving, and they assure me that there's a path.
Yep, we know, Ricky.
And I appreciate y'all's time.
Yep, thank you.
Mark, you didn't miss a word.
Mark, this is like Christmas for you, isn't it?
I know.
I'm gonna stay with you.
Mark, like I'm saying anything, it's going good.
Inside, there is no skid steer.
Yeah.
I know, I keep waiting for that to come up next.
I was trying to wind that in the conversation, you did a great job.
Thank you.
He's been wanting that septic tank deal taken care of since he's been here.
I know, they need it, that was a mess. Okay. Want to start with your initial report?
Sure. Uh, we went to, all three of us went down to the dispatch ceremony where they were, uh, that was a neat little deal, it was quite a few people. I, I didn't realize there was that many people working out there, but there's a, there's a bunch of them. Um, went down to Coquik Meeting in Chaparral, visited with those people a lot. Also went to farewell to the probate judge, went back to the monthly, Monday meeting in Chaparral. Uh, I went, I'm on the board on, uh, it's a committee for the Sacramento Foundation for its how-to improve Alamogordo. Uh, went to a meeting there, they, they have a company out of Illinois, I believe, that they've contracted out to bring proposals, suggestions, so it's in the process of there. Uh, in September, I'm gonna take the foundation, um, a couple of board members back down to Chaparral, they, they want to do something in Chaparral- They, they want to do something in Chaparral, they just don't know what. So we're going to get with Colquitt and a couple of other people down there and go over all of that, but that's what I've been up to. He's not here.
Okay. First I received a letter from somebody, no return address and no contact information on the letter. So I don't know how to contact this person. So if you're listening, this is a, you have to contact the Tulosa Council. It's in the Tulosa limits. So whoever sent me this letter on Marshall, I can't do anything. I attended the Otero County Audit Zoom meeting with Julianne. Very informative, went very well. I did go to the Sacramento Foundation meeting too to address blight in the neighborhood, the one at the hospital. Excellent, excellent award session. Went to the Otero County Co-op meeting in Cloudcroft. Went to the CIT graduation for the dispatchers. Went to a fantastic Charlie Kirk event, I just have to mention that?
Oh, yeah.
Fantastic. And also went to another fantastic, fantastic event with Joey Jones.
Oh, yeah.
Amazing, so motivating, so positive. Yeah, I couldn't brag on him enough. Went to 100% Otero Housing Meeting. Went yesterday to the Artisia PVT tour with all the congressional leaders from across the United States, I guess you could say, which is pretty exciting because, you know, I've been working on broadband expansion for years and years and years and years and years, no, for three years.
Feels like it, yeah.
And, you know, they talked about the projects, obviously in Otero County, Pinion, Sacramento and all that, how they're trying to get the broadband fiber to those areas, or at least connectivity. And, you know, I've been watching Tulosa Basin Telephone Company with that line that needs to go to the jail and dispatch center. It's, it's, it's coming along, so it's nice to see that stuff in fruition. But what I'm wondering is, you know, Pam, that we hired those people to oversee this kind of stuff, are they working on La Proceda, La Luz, all of those still? Or, or, because I'm wondering, you know, now that these projects are moving forward, what are the next projects that we're working on?
Okay, we're talking about the COG that we just talked about earlier.
The broadband expansion.
Oh, the broadband, I was going to give you a, a, an update.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, that's coming.
And then I went to a Zoom employee termination meeting for counties. I went to a meeting carrier proxy for Vicki.
Thank you.
And then RBU walked in just in time because I have one of our Bent residents asking about the status of all the engineering and the covert process and all the flooding mitigation that we're trying to do up there.
I, I heard Trent mention the Twin Forks one. I did not hear him mention Bent. I, I know it is, they're working on it. And, and I know as a result of the new damage that more work and likely more funding. Because we'll still, they need to finish the, the grant project right now from Colonius. And from that, we can apply again this March, upcoming March for the funding to implement whatever the design is. So we'll have that funding. But I believe because of all of the, the scale of the flooding and fires this year, there will be federal funding that will be opening up for some of that. And we're going to have a meeting next week. We met with the Corps of Engineers yesterday to go over all of the areas that people, that, that various stakeholders identified. And we're going through this really tedious process where there's different rating areas, scales, and we are ranking each area in order to prioritize it. And we are going to finish that process on Monday morning. Without the Corps of Engineers, just Pamela, me, Tom, Matt and Pablo probably sitting together and assigning the numbers. It's going to be a lot of fun if anyone wants to bring breakfast.
Sounds like fun. Bring breakfast.
But, yeah, so Ben, and it's, it's not going to happen in the next, I mean, the assessment will happen within this year and then projects will start happening next year.
And Commissioner, I can answer on the Bent with the Colonius Infrastructure Project for the roads and drainage. I just signed those notices to proceed this week that we received both on this project and La Luz. So, the notice to proceed was approved by Trent. I signed those and we sent those back this week.
Great, that's good news. That is good. I think that's all I've been doing.
Okay. We did go to that Otero County Co-op meeting in Cloudcroft. There were a lot of people there this year. I think there was more than any before. One thing they said that I did not know is they gave out that little gadget in the goody bag that you can rip off your seatbelt, you can cut your seatbelt. But they said the cars are locking now. When you, when your airbag goes off, that seatbelt locks. So you have to have that to be able to cut out.
Seatbelts do lock, yes, that's correct.
That's pretty creepy.
It is, yeah.
I don't, I don't like that. Okay, and then I.
For the purpose of, of used parts person being able to resell them. So you're supposed to still be able to get out of them, but not use them again. That's the intent of that. But, so, that's probably a future recall.
Yeah.
That's going to happen if you can't get out of it.
Yeah, that's, that's a lawsuit in the making right there. I attended the Arizona and Mexico Coalition Counties Board meeting. We had it in Thatcher, Arizona this year. Went to the grand opening of the Worship Center, that new event center they have. That's really nice. If anybody should go there and they've got a coffee shop. Yeah, they've got a really good coffee shop. Attended the Roseville County Commission meeting in Peralis. I did a presentation over there. Attended the Tulosa Basin Regional Dispatch Authority swearing in ceremony and with Commissioner Barella Matherly, and that was really good. And Judge Boyce did a really good job doing that her last official swearing in, kind of sad. Attended the New Mexico Association of Counties Board meeting in Farmington. And right now I'm attending the New Mexico Sheriff's Training Conference in Ridoso. And that's really been pretty cool. We've got the DFA, or the DEA there, FBI, Homeland Security, ATF and Border Patrol. And they came in and made a, a big presentation about how they're working together now. They've actually set up, like, there's different areas, but they all work together. And they said they've never done this before. They usually fight with each other over whose jurisdiction it is. And they said this has been like really helping and it's cheaper because they're, you know, they're, they're joining forces instead of fighting against each other. So I thought that was interesting. And they had some interesting things to say about New Mexico, but I won't go into that on open mic. But I think we're going to maybe be getting some help. So I'll be going back up there when this meeting's over.
Have a question, free to ask it for me. Don't forget.
Okay, okay. All right, and that's, that's what I have. So Pamela, you ready?
Yes, sorry, we were.
It's okay.
So, yeah, the Audit Entrance Conference was, was had and the staff is working really hard already getting the auditors everything they're requesting. So Julianne is in, deep in the middle of it and Wendy and Sylvia has to provide stuff. So that's, that's off to a good start. I wanted to let you know that I met with the new director for the Flickinger Center, Gerard. I forget his last name at the moment. A really nice guy, very experienced, very educated. Has ran facilities much larger than this. They have some exciting things planned. And we met to discuss our relationship, how close our relationship is and how we work together. And so we, we hope to continue that. And then, of course, like I mentioned, we've continued our biweekly broadband meetings. A lot of that's still in limbo because BEAD is kind of on hold because of the federal government. So we don't know about BEAD awards yet. I, the group is still working to reach out to schools and, and, and the city, and the village, and this and that, to see what their needs are, to see if we can provide any assistance since we have their, their support for two years or not quite two years anymore. And we were having trouble getting ahold of Mayor King. So Vicki was so helpful to reach out to him and I've asked him to reconnect again. So maybe when I talk to him next week, that'll happen. We are working in addition with Matt to address communication needs, whether it be for our facilities or for fire departments, providing, we do have Wi-Fi in the fire departments, but seeing if we can expand on that. So we have a lot of fun things we're doing. Because we've been funded for two years, we've been able to broaden that little, not just broadband, but also communication. They have been helpful to point Matt in the direction of some grants that are going to be very useful to us. And they will assist in developing those grants as well.
Good, good.
So it's really exciting.
Don't forget La Luz Canyon, La Proceda Canyon. I know, I might only have one year to do it.
Right.
I might have five.
Well, and it's not, it's not this. It's not this group's job to provide broadband. That theirs is to coordinate and help efforts for our private companies to get it done. So they do reach out to those companies and ask, did you submit? Do you need help? So they can't write the grants form because they're private companies, but they can communicate and keep us in the loop of what they're doing to get that done. So, we're pretty excited.
Okay, well, on the, on the statewide map, you can see that that area is underserved. So whatever we can do to help them, push them, I think it's TBTC that will be doing that one.
Exactly.
They've done a lot, I think they're almost done in the Dog Canyon area, yeah.
And you're, by your, yeah, on your street or?
Yeah.
Yep, you're welcome.
You reached out to the Donanna manager, did he respond?
Yes, and he, he flat out told me he's not good with email. He fails, I guess, at email. Anyway, I did, I told him, said, hey, let's meet next week. However, I wanted just he and I to sit down and talk about, he wants to bring his staff, his budget director, his economic developer, all of assistant county managers. And I said, I don't have assistant county managers, I have one attorney. I just kind of, he says he's doing a road show to adjoining counties with his team and would like to do that here. So, I told him, these are my availability dates. Let me know, I'm waiting. I haven't heard from him since Thursday morning. I'm, I'm trying.
Yeah, he's, he, he's a little different.
I don't, I don't need a whole team from Donanna. I just need the manager to, you know, have a sit down and let's talk about the issues in Chaparral. So, we'll see. I, I'll keep you posted as I hear from him. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. So, as I mentioned, the flood project with the Corps of Engineers, we're proceeding on that. And we'll meet on Monday to finish the, the prior, prioritization of areas. Had a meeting with the courthouse architect and construction firm two weeks ago and going over the, the planning and the material cost. And, and so we have, they've finished identifying all the materials needed and the costs associated. And now we're whittling that down to get it within budget. And, yeah, well, that's, you know, switching from one flooring option to another, cut a million out. So it's like things like that. So hopefully they will come back with new numbers in the next week or so. Had some meetings with code enforcement with a, with software company. We're looking at getting software tools to assist code enforcement, make it more efficient and get rid of redundancy and wasted hours of work and streamline it. And that will also assist us with some of our permitting processes like the floodplain permitting and driveway permits, things like that. And I'm still working on the MOU with Community Power. I've pulled several examples from across the country and I'm going through those and employing the, the good things from that that waiver forms and different things for liability to cover that. They did go to the last Kipo-Tero County Beautiful meeting and, and had a discussion about collaboration and it was really positive. That was good. Thrive, Dave Carrion approved the resolution today. That's going to be September 12th. They have already identified most of the properties they're going to do. I'm waiting on the list of those. Some are in the county, some are in high rolls in Mayhill and some other unincorporated parts of the county. So, once I get that list, I'll get with Cody and we'll see if it aligns with, with code enforcement needs or, you know, how, how it aligns with the county's mission. And if there's alignment, we'll see what ways we can support and facilitate the cleanup of that. One of the board members of Thrive is running it. He's the deputy director out of the 49th Maintenance Group at Holloman. So I've been corresponding with him via email and we'll probably meet in the next week or two so that we can see how the county can help. But with the resolution you passed today, that authorizes us to commit resources if, if it aligns. Got an update today that the NEPA regulations and process for both BLM and Forest Service have been updated. And it is like capturing a lot of stuff that we've been wanting for a long time, including requirement to coordinate with local governments. So, I did briefly text with Jason Freeman about that and suggested having a discussion soon to see how that's going to work. That's about it.
Can you email me some type of ordinance on the fireworks noise ordinance? I don't know what the county has for, that way I can take down there to them, people in Chaparral and let them.
And then what's the status of the Oregon Day Mine?
I think we're waiting on him to provide final maps or surveys. I did speak with Margaret Byfield about the process for establishing a road as 2477. And there's a couple of ways to do it. And depending on the, how things are going at the BLM and who's in charge, that can require litigation at times. I think we are not in that situation right now. And so she was going to connect me with an attorney in Utah who was kind of an expert in that. And I need to follow up with her to, to do that. The BLM did provide a way for them to get, get going, like they could have already been going if they would just submit that application. It's, it's just a statement of intent to dig in the dirt. And, and, and BLM can approve it in less than two weeks. I don't see any waiver of rights by them doing that. And separately, they could be working on with us and getting this, this road designated and recognized as the RS 2477 road. I think there's, you can show continuous use that, you know, dates back 100 years or so. But there's definitely a case to be made for it. But we want to get the mining and get their employees back. So I wish they would just file that application and, or get that permit. But I'm kind of stubborn.
Okay.
One other thing I forgot to say was, you know, we bought those, we're doing the maintenance on those 27 streetlights in Chaparral through the state. The streetlights are all up. Everything's done except for the lamps have not been put on yet, so.
Yeah, when I went through several weeks ago, they weren't there yet.
But they're, it won't be long.
Okay.
Also, I don't know what El Paso Electric and stuff has got going, but they're building a big substation right on the edge of, edge of the Texas State Line, State Line Road. So they've got a lot of stuff going. I heard they're fixing to do a subdivision right along the fence right there. And then Donanna's fixing to turn over 3,500 lots to do a subdivision in Chaparral. So Chaparral's fixing, that's all on Donanna's side, but Chaparral's fixing to take off, so.
And then I do have one more question. There's another solar field trying to get developed that is on the south side of the Labra. There's another solar field trying to get developed that is on the south side of the Labreth. Have we heard anything about that yet?
I wasn't aware of that one.
So, Teresa's very concerned about that going up right there. I don't understand fully, but I guess the physical aura of the Labreth would be interfered by a solar field right next to it. So, I think we're gonna have opposition to that? So, if we have any applications or something that's coming up?
We don't, I, we don't have anything automatic that triggers it. It's if they are wanting to do an industrial revenue bond, they come to us. We don't have anything mandating that they do a reclamation plan if it's on private property. So, you know, but there are ways to organize protest it or something if that's what you want to do and get info about it. But, we would need more information on who's doing it, what the details are.
Okay.
Hey, anything else?
Yep.
Okay, I wanna take a break before we go into executive session.
You wanna go ahead and go into, so they can leave?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, I make a motion to hold an executive session under NMSA 1978 10-15-1-1-8 to discuss purchase and sale of real property. I can second?
I'll second that, sorry.
All in favor? Aye.
I didn't turn the page, I didn't see, we're having that.
Commissioner Markhart?
Here.
Commissioner Matherly?
Here.
Commissioner Rell?
Here.
Okay.